The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest. The air is fresh with the scent of fresh grass. The birds are singing in the forest.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start the -- welcome to the City of San Carlos Joint City Council, Planning Commission, Single Family House Advisory Committee, City Council Regular Meeting. Wow, that was a lot. I didn't see a comma there. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your volunteerism on the Single Family Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for -- appreciate your input. And obviously, the Planning Commission, thank you folks for your input also. We'll get started. Call to order. Okay, that was it. Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any changes to the order of the agenda? Anybody on the dais or staff?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next item is public comment. These are for items not on the posted agenda. We'll have plenty of time for folks to talk about the major item we're talking about tonight. But I have some speaker cards for folks that have something to say that is not on the posted agenda. We like to keep this to a couple of minutes, so I'll just go in the order that they were handed to me. Karen Shane, welcome.
Thank you, Council Mayor. My name is Karen Shane. I'm owner of 1403-1413 Magnolia. And I'm here because we have, I guess, a city tree that we're supposed to be responsible for. And even just yesterday, apparently, a branch came down on a car. And the reason why I'm here is because in 2016, or actually, 2015 to 2016, because it took a year, we were involved with the sidewalk, replacing the sidewalk, which we paid $7,000 for to have all the sidewalks done. We did it through the city. My husband is a general contractor. He said the quote was really expensive. And then come six, seven months later, the city is now partnering with the homeowners to pay for some of these sidewalks, but we had already done that. So I'm calling out the issue about city trees, and that they are dangerous, and that there should be some program for owners of the city trees to help pay for them. It's a huge elm, I think, is what it is. And it's going to be a lot of money. And before I go and pay for all this, I just wanted to bring it up. And so that's why I'm here. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Maybe we can have Public Works. Stephen, could you later on match up with her and then figure out who's on first there?
Thank you.
Can't promise anything, but at least you'll talk to somebody.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next speaker card I have is Lori -- I'm sorry. With where? I'm sorry. Apologize.
Hi there. So the clock starts over? Do I hit it?
I'm sorry?
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Lori Kretschmar. I'm here tonight on behalf of Seventy Strong. Please raise your hand if you've heard of it. Excellent. So Seventy Strong, this is a card for San Carlos residents, recently received this in the mail. It's a free service to free and low-cost activities here in the community for people 60 and up. So despite the name Seventy Strong, it's for people 60 and up. We want to help people stay engaged and connected. You know, there's kind of an epidemic of loneliness, and we don't want people to feel lonely in a city where there's so many things happening and in our community. Seventy Strong is brought to you by Sequoia Healthcare District in partnership with the nonprofit Peninsula Family Service. So we would love if you would all spread the word about seventystrong.org. I see some of you on Twitter. And know that we have just many, many resources. You know about, of course, the San Carlos Adult Activity Center. There's other great classes in Redwood City, Belmont, and so forth. There's everything from yoga, tai chi, softball for seniors, also dementia resources, support groups for new caregivers and people with illness, just all kinds of things. We also have a blog and an events calendar. On the blog, you'll find out, if you don't already know about her, about local hero and triathlete Harriet Anderson. She just turned 83. She's done 23 Ironman triathlons in Hawaii. She's truly phenomenal citizen. Anyway, if you would help spread the word about seventystrong.org, we'd appreciate it. And we have a phone number. It is 650-780-7547. And that's on the flyer, and if anyone wants it, just ask. And you'll find that number at seventystrong.org.
Great. Thank you very much.
You. Thanks.
I think I've watched the Ironman. That's about as close as I think I've gotten to it, but... Next speaker we have is Sarah -- Kenahan? I'm sorry. Apologize.
Thank you. Sarah Kenahan.
Kenahan.
I'm a San Carlos resident and a parent with two children at White Oaks Elementary. And this is the third time I've been here in the last two years, talking about the terrible childcare and preschool shortage that we have in the county. I think it was about a year ago, almost exactly, that the city received a really excellent report from Economic Planning Systems, Inc., with some options that the city could take to help ease the process of developing new childcare and preschool. There's currently a shortage of, I think the first time I was here, it was 139 spaces for infants and toddlers. That's up to 180 spaces for infants and toddlers. We need around 500 preschool spaces and close to 700 after-school spaces. So some of the recommendations in the report were making it easier for family childcare homes to expand from a small to large license, looking at including childcare in new developments as a community benefit. So as the city is grappling with other development issues, looking at ordinances related to housing, I'd also ask that you take a look at the ordinances and the planning related to childcare. And just to conclude, I'm now working part-time with a group called Build Up for San Mateo County's Children. And this is a multi-sector group that's working on this issue. And we have a short, two-page article on actions cities can take to address this shortage, and it has our contact information. So I'd like to submit this.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I just ask, my understanding from staff is that this is coming forward on a future agenda. Is that right? And do you have a rough timeline in mind?
After the first of the year sometime. So I don't have anything more specific for you. You'd have to look at the calendar on that. But we do have it scheduled.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. I have one more speaker. Ron, I think I know how to do this by now. Piovison. I'll get it in about 20 years, but I won't be here. But welcome, Ron.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time. And actually, the previous speaker addressed my concern, and I'm glad to hear that the issue of childcare is going to be brought up early next year, it is. But I do also want to highlight, just as a concerned parent, that the issue of childcare is a very pressing one. One other stat that I would just highlight was, is that obviously, earlier this year, the SMARTY program was changed, and about half of the students impacted by that change were part-time students, my family being, you know, my family being one of those families. And, you know, this is putting a pretty big strain on the family, where it's hard to, you know, juggle dual incomes. You have to be someplace at one time and different place at a different time. And it's also, I would also characterize it as a community issue, not just a school issue, because it is impacting our ability, as well as the ability of some of our neighbors, to contribute to community events and school events, too. So it feels like there's a lot of things the city could do. I know there's a lot of parents who would like to partner with the city to come up with some creative solutions. We're not just throwing this out at you. So again, heartened that this will be discussed, offering, you know, my services and those of other parents and neighbors to work with you to come up with a solution on how to deal with childcare.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any item not on the posted agenda tonight? All right. We'll move on then. Next item is our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are usually done in one motion. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
I second. Moved and seconded to approve all the items under five. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Grokut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right. Item number six, City Council Public Hearing. City Council consideration of introducing an ordinance adopting amendments to the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title 18 and San Carlos municipal code, consisting of changes to chapters 18.03 Rules of Measurement, 18.04 Residential Districts, 18.12 Hillside Overlay District, 18.20 Parking and Loading, 18.29 Design Review, and 18.41 Terms and Definitions to Reduce House Size in the RS6 Single Family Zoning District. Before we get started, I just wanted to say a few things. We may go into a second meeting for this, which would be carried over to the 22nd. We may not. It depends on conversation, depends on the five of us up there, if we can come to a decision. If we do start to go into the night, logic says that we will go to a second meeting. So if you don't get a chance to speak tonight, you would then, although hopefully, tonight you will get a chance to speak. The other thing I always like to say when there's a lot of folks here, and I think there's going to be more coming, there will be things said from the speakers, folks from staff, there'll be individuals speaking from the microphone. The dais will say things. And not everything said tonight will be in agreement with possibly what you think. That's the nature of the beast. Some think left, some think right. But there may be things that you disagree with, perhaps very, very much so. That's going to happen. But what I would appreciate is that you internalize that and not have this turn into any kind of a sporting event, football game, clapping, booing, cheering, whatever. We've had really good relations with these meetings in the past, and I would hope that the citizens of San Carlos would continue that good situation this evening. I think that's just about it. Mr. Savay, are you going to be talking or start? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Malpe. I apologize. Mr. Malpe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When the council asked staff to address this issue, they made it clear that while they didn't have any preconceived notions as to what the final results might be, they did know that they wanted a robust public process. And so their first substantive decision was to form the seven-member Shack Committee, whose job it would ultimately be to study the issue and make recommendations to our Planning Commission. Both those bodies are represented here this evening in this joint meeting. Over the course of many hours and meetings, the Shack members applied themselves to this charge on this complex and difficult task. And I'd like to thank each and every one of the seven members of the Shack or Single Family Home Advisory Committee. They are Laura Lohan-Palmer, Kate Wilmington, Adam Cates, Christian Vessier, who are representing property owners, single-family property owners here in town. We also have local builder and developer Robert Stafford, local architect designer Ray Viotti, and local realtor Amy Anderson Gugliano, not all of whom could be here with us this evening. It's no small matter weighing the concerns and interests of individual homeowners alongside those of neighbors and community members. These are complex, serious issues that do affect families directly. All points of view command our attention, our respect, and our best efforts at a compassionate, inclusive result. I'd also like to thank our planning commissioners, who are always hard at work on the front lines of these issues. Very thankless job, gentlemen, so you get a thank you from us tonight on that. They are Tom Bradley, our chair this year of the Planning Commission, Shannon Bergman, our vice chair, John Duggan, Jim Yaccaponi, and David Roof. They struck a balance between careful consideration, respect for the process, and others' points of view. And finally, a quick thank you to Al Savay and his team of Lisa Porras, Lisa Costa-Sanders, and Stephen Pellegrini for their assistance, expertise, and professionalism throughout this long process. Tonight's meeting represents the culmination of nearly two years of work and public meetings. The issue of single-family house sizes in a community is neither unique to San Carlos nor unique to this moment in time. It's an issue all communities wrestle with from time to time. It's an issue we've wrestled with multiple times in our community's history, and one I have no doubt will one day hear from again. It's complex, literally hits close to home in many ways, and has the effect of changing perspectives throughout the course of our evolving lives, young families versus folks who maybe are empty nesters or retirees. As with most issues of this nature and complexity, there are few, if any, right answers. There are thousands of variables, mountains of data, and hundreds, if not thousands, of unique opinions and circumstances where these regulations would be applied, all with their own pros and cons, but none that should be anointed as right or correct. It can be very uncomfortable to tell people what they can and cannot do with their own private property, especially when the property in question represents one's home, and in most cases, their single largest financial investment. Points of view vary. Emotions can run hot. We're talking about homes, neighborhoods, so we need to be compassionate listeners and respectful of all perspectives. As I see it, the council has six primary options which to choose from. The first, I've dubbed the time machine, and that's the pre-2011 regulations. There is, of course, the status quo, the regulations we have today. There's the Shack recommendations, or as I think of them, classic San Carlos architecture, form-based building. Planning Commission has their own hybrid, which was generated by Shack's work and Good Growth San Carlos, a community-based group of residents who provided a lot of input throughout the process. There's also the Good Growth San Carlos recommendations for FAR that you'll hear more about tonight as part of the presentation. And then, of course, there's a sixth approach, which will be a council-derived hybrid of all of the above and anything else, including the kitchen sink you can think of. So here's how we propose to proceed tonight in this joint meeting of the City Council, Planning Commission, and Shack. We're going to get a presentation from staff that will consist of an analysis of house size and single-family zoning issues, a presentation of the Shack and Planning Commission recommendations that will be presented by Mr. Savay shortly. At the conclusion of his presentation on the Shack recommendations, Al will give the Shack members an opportunity to add anything that they'd like to, to his representation of the committee's recommendations before moving on to the Planning Commission recommendations. They'll be given the same opportunity. When Al's finished with that presentation, which we expect will be about an hour, we've timed it a few times here, we will turn it over to Good Growth San Carlos for a presentation. We've asked them to limit their presentation to 20 minutes. We're asking the council to hold all your questions until we've concluded with the presentation portion of the agenda item. Once the presentations are done, we'll tackle your questions. They might be for staff, they might be for Good Growth San Carlos, they might be for Shack members, or Planning Commission members, or possibly folks from the audience. And then we'll turn it over to public comment. We imagine that depending on the amount of public comment and questions the council might have, it may be fairly, getting fairly late by the time we're done with public comment. The council might not be comfortable with diving into discussion and recommendations at that point. If that's the case, you can close the public hearing and continue this item to your October 22 council meeting. At that meeting, you could elect to reopen the public hearing, to take more public comment, or just move forward in terms of your discussion and actionable items. So just by way of getting started here, you might recall, two years ago, I know it's been some time, but the charge that you gave staff was to examine various issues concerning the scale and size of single-family homes here in San Carlos. So we did hear through the process from the public a number of other issues that will likely come up in Al's presentation, but the direction that we had gotten from council was size and scale, and that was our primary focus. With that, I'll turn it over to Al Savay.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission, and members of the Single Family House Advisory Committee. I'm Al Savay. I'm the Community and Economic Development Director with the City of San Carlos, and I want I want to thank you in advance for allowing me to speak for so long. A great deal of thought and analysis has gone into, as Mr. Malpe mentioned, on the focus of house size in our community, and it's been two years, so I'll be covering a lot of ground in my presentation. If I don't cover an issue or topic you or someone else is interested in, then we can certainly answer those questions, and we're prepared to answer a wide array of questions this evening. Before I begin, I'd like to make some introductions. We have Stefan Pellegrini, he's an architect and principal with Optico's Design, and he's been assisting the city in this process, he's our consultant, and I may be asking him to come up and answer questions as they arise. We also have Lisa Porras and Lisa Costa-Sanders, both are principal planners, and they've been very involved and engaged in this project as well. So in terms of my presentation, I'm going to start with the process, walk you through the process that we went through. I'm going to talk a little bit about single-family house size, rather marketplace and economics. I think it's really important to cover these issues, and there's a lot of considerations there. Issue identification and analysis, what are the things we found when we got into the analysis, and then the house size, single-family house size committee recommendations, and then the planning commission recommendations, and then, of course, question and answers. What I thought I'd do is start with a little background, and, here we go. So if we go back a little bit, I think a lot of people remember that back in 2011, we did a comprehensive zoning ordinance update, and at that time, lot coverage for single-family houses was changed from 40% to 50%, and minimum lot size was reduced also from 10,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. And between that time, 2011, 2016 or so, a lot of people began to complain about lot splits in our community, and that some of these 10,000-square-foot lots were being split into two. And so as a result, in 2017, the city council changed the regulations back to the pre-2011 subdivision regulations, which said that now you've got to go back and have 10,000 square feet to subdivide. But at that time, people also started to talk about the house size in addition to these lot splits in our community. And so that's sort of the first time that this issue started to come out in our community. Now, in terms of the process, again, a long, in-depth process started back last September, or a couple of years ago in September 2016, and it started when the city council formed an ad hoc committee. And that ad hoc committee was providing guidance to city staff, and they helped to decide, along with the city council, to go out and appoint Citizens Advisory Committee. Historically, City of San Carlos has done this in the past, and we've been very successful in doing that. And so a call for applications was sent out to the community, and the community received a great number of applications. The city council did in-depth interviews of a number of those folks that applied, and a seven-member committee was put together, and I'll talk a little bit more about the Shack and who they are later in the presentation. The Shack then started to break down the issues and started to look at it from the very beginning, and I'll walk you through some of the things that they looked at. And they had six meetings, and each of these meetings was really in-depth, they were all open to the public as well. And so they spent a good deal of time really diving into the issues and formulating approaches and solutions. And they ended up coming up with a series of amendments that were recommended on. We also started to talk to architects and local designers, and one of the reasons that we do that, particularly in the planning area, is we like to get a reality check from the experts. And we often go out to architects and designers, or contractors, developers, and say, okay, is what we're looking at here real? Can it be done? Can it be implemented? What are some of the issues that you see? So we had a number of meetings with local architects and designers as well. We continued to meet with the council ad hoc committee. Back in May, the Shack made their final recommendations for the new standards. Following that, we had a community workshop back in May, and it was very well-attended. I'd say there was, you know, in excess of 100, maybe even 150 people that showed up for that meeting. And then we had a planning commission, our first planning commission study session. Kept meeting with the architects and designers. We had another, we had three meetings with our planning commission, three study sessions with our planning commission, and finally, in September, they made some recommendations to the city council, and I'm going to walk you through that. We met again with our council ad hoc committee, and tonight, we're at, in October, with our city council meeting. So I thought I would start by talking about some of the things that people have been thinking about and talking about in this process, and it's really important that these things be considered, and I've heard a lot from a number of different people. So a couple of things. What's influencing house size and homeowner preferences in our community? Generally, people want bigger houses than the '50s and the '60s, a minimum of three-bedroom and two-bath with common areas located on the lower level. A floor plan that promotes family lifestyle, a lot of times, everybody wants to be together. They want to be in the living room, they want to be in the family room, see each other from the kitchen. In this area, often, we have two wage earners, and you might want an office or two in your home as well. We're starting to see taller building heights as well. It used to be where it was like 7 feet 6 or 8 feet that we'd see in the homes. And nowadays, people like the feel when they walk in, that open feel. So we're starting to see taller ceiling heights as well. Again, larger kitchens and common areas, a lot of times, back in the past, I remember in my home, the kitchen was, had walls, and it was sectioned off from the dining room. Things weren't open like people like today. Adult children stay longer in the home. A lot of times, we have grandma and grandpa that want to come and live in the home as well. We have people visiting from out of the area. So these are some of the things that has been influencing house size and homeowner preferences in the City of San Carlos. Now, in terms of some of the key considerations in making changes to the house size, these are some of the other things that people have been talking about and thinking about in this process. And the question is, well, does the 1,400, 1,700 square foot of earlier time still work for the families today? Land values are high, and what we're hearing from local architects is one of the first things that people ask the architect is, well, how much square footage can I get? Should people be allowed to build to the value of their land? Or should zoning allow people to build to the value of their land? So how much is appropriate, and how do we use zoning to regulate it? How do we mitigate the impacts that we're hearing about, about bulk and mass and privacy, light and air? And how do we balance all these issues? And this has been a real big struggle. It's very difficult to answer these questions, and so a great deal of thought and analysis has gone into all these things. In terms of market economics, this is some data that we pulled for 2018 home sales from January to August. And what's interesting about this data, we compared ourselves to a number of local communities, as you can see there. And what I find interesting about this data in particular is, on the smaller lots, you'll see, in San Carlos, at the 0 to 1,500 square foot price range, you have a higher number than at the 1,500 to 2,500, or the 2,500 to and above. And what I find interesting, and what that tells me, is that people want to live in the areas, on the flatter areas of our community. And that's because, most likely, people like to walk to the schools, they like to walk to downtown, they want to be closer to the services and the businesses, so there's a premium on those lots in the flat areas near the downtown, in and around the downtown. And those are where some of the smaller lots are, and where some of the smaller houses are as well. In terms of more data, and I'm going to be throwing a lot of data out this evening, new house permits, we had about 15 of those in the last 22 months, and about 193 remodels and additions in that same time period. Cost of construction, we've talked to some local contractors and architects, and they're telling us that the cost per square foot is about 425 to 550. However, it depends on the kind of finishes that you want. The higher-end finishes, you're going to get, you know, you could be up in the $700 range or higher even. And then you have your plans and your studies and your permits that you need to put together as well. So that adds to the cost of construction. What I thought I'd do now is take a step back, and one of the things that the city planners like to do is some things that we call, we call it ground truthing, or, and it's where we like to look for the root cause of issues and what contributes to house size and things like that. So what I did is I took an aerial photograph of a neighborhood in San Carlos that I think is representative of something that feels right when you walk down the street. It's an area near downtown, as I discussed, you know, it's an area where you have 6,000 square foot lot sizes, you know, they're about 50 by 120 feet, so very common to the flat areas of our community. And this is on Elm Street, and we have a Royo and Walnut Street here. So what you see, if you start to look at these homes, is the form of the homes, and I'm going to use the word "form" a lot, and what I mean by that is, you know, basically the shape and how it looks. And these are, if you look at some of these homes, many of them are older homes, they were built in the '40s and '50s, and some earlier than that, and you can see that a lot of them are square, they're box, you know, form, or they're a rectangular form. And what people were doing, and you see this a lot, is that, you know, you had your main living area, maybe it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and then some of them have the garage that's detached from the main unit. And then what you'll also see is these wings that come off of the main body of the house. And that may be that you want to add on a little extra square footage, maybe you moved in and it wasn't big enough, so you see these wings. So the main body of the home is where the main living area is, and then you might have a family room or other floor area that comes off of the house. And again, noting that we see these garages that are detached, what that leads to is a long driveway that leads to the garage. And one of the benefits of a long driveway is you get more cars off the street, as you can see, they're all kind of lined up there in the driveway. And some of the other forms that you might see, and I think that what we're going to see in the presentation, is that these rectangular forms are more reminiscent of what we're seeing today, what's being built today. So some of the, if you look at that main body size, you see about 45 feet in depth, maybe 30 feet in width or so. And some of these houses have been remodeled over the years, and we'll take a closer look at that. But I think this is typical of the flat areas of the City of San Carlos. And so if we start to look at some of the houses that are along Elm Street, what you'll see is the main body of the house on the ground floor, again, you might have a living room or a family room out toward the street, you see the entry feature, which is a very important feature in the home. Very attractive to have the front door as your focal point, and then, again, these wings that protrude from the main body of the home. So this is a single-family house. A number of years ago, this single-family house was added to, and this is an older home, and these have the garages at the rear. And this one does have a second floor, it's a little lower, it kind of steps back away from the front of the home. And these are current examples of what we're seeing, more modern examples of construction that we're seeing in San Carlos. And so what you'll see that's a little different, and this house in particular is across the street from the gray house that I just showed on the right, that was on the right-hand side of the screen. This is a newer house built in the last few years, and what we see here is a garage, a two-car garage at the front of the house, and then the entry of the home kind of set back away, and some living area set back away from the home. Same thing here, this is another neighborhood, but just as an example, it's very similar to what we see on Elm Street, with the garage really at the front of the home. And when we first started to look at, well, what are the, again, the root causes of people saying that these homes look big or massive? One of the things that stuck out was the garage, and the garage is a big space, it's 20 by maybe 15 or 12. It's a big mass in the building. And one of the things that we heard, and we kept talking about garages through the process, and one of the things that we heard, I recall, from somebody in the public, they said, well, we aren't complaining about garages, and we recognize that, yeah, nobody's complaining about garages, we love our garages. But what we determined is that the garage, by taking up so much of the front of the house in the ground floor, really added to the appearance of bulk and mass. And some of those older homes had living area at the front. So this is about, you know, 65% or 60, more than 60% of the home now is at the front of the, is the garage, is a two-car garage, as opposed to living area. So that was one of the things that we determined back in the Shack process that was adding to the bulk and mass of the homes. And so let's take a bird's eye view, and again, there's that home that we saw earlier. There's my mouse, I'm looking for my mouse, there we go. There's that home that we saw earlier in the presentation, the little gray house, it's been remodeled over the years, very charming, a single-story house, same size as the one across the street, but this one was done more recently. And as you can see, the form of this house is different. You don't have the wings that stick off of the main body like you might see here or across the street. Everything is in more of a rectangular box, it's all pushed together, including the garage. And so what that does is contributes to the bulk and the mass of that home. So one of the problems that we identified then is that, under the current standards, large garages at the ground floor with limited spaces for entries, leave limited space for entries, and rooms at the setback line, and again, you get sort of a bigger box, it's long, it's linear, and the door, the main focal point to houses, becomes an afterthought in terms of architecture. So one of the other things that we did is we put together some models to help us to visualize in three-dimensional way what some of the problems were and what was happening. And so in this model that we put together, this is, you know, these are 45-foot lots that we're looking at right now. But this gray box here represents the existing zoning envelope, and what that means is, you know, you're built out, you're maxed out to the setbacks, and then this area here is a 30% area adjustment that the city allows for a second floor. Normally, you have to set your second floor in about nine feet, it's five feet on the first floor. So you get these areas either at the front or the back. And so some of the things that we heard during the process was that, you know, hey, I just put a sunroom or an addition, you know, in my house on the ground floor there, and then a guy, or somebody came next door and they put in this second floor, and now I have issues with regard to shadowing effects and things like that. So these models helped us to better understand some of the things that were occurring. So in terms of some of the key findings... So in terms of some of the key findings, our existing envelope, we found, can result in forms that look and feel large, particularly that garage thing that we, we discussed. The zoning envelope allows for long houses, so the setbacks, you have 15 at the front, 15 at the rear, we ended up getting, we end up getting long houses with that garage that dominates. And what we also heard and saw a little bit in our data is that more recent homes are building more closely to the zoning envelope, they're getting, you know, they're, the architects are telling us too, that, you know, people are saying, well, what's the max I can get? What we'll see from some of the maps that we'll show you is that we have a proportionally high number of small lots in our community, and that's also contributing to the issue. And then we have, of course, two stories, people are saying looks big next to the historic one story homes. In terms of starting to break it down, then, in looking at our topography, again, another part of our ground truthing is to kind of start with what's on the land, what does our geography look like? And, and one of the interesting things, if you start to look at this map, is you'll see that, that are, we, we do have significant sloping areas in our community, the blue represents areas that are in excess of 20% slope in San Carlos. And we've always recognized that these areas are different in San Carlos. And, and so we have adopted separate zoning for those hillside overlay zone areas. And we recognize that, for instance, you can't put a garage on a hillside right, you know, set it 15 or 20 feet back away from the street, you have to dig it into the hillside. So we always said through our hillside overlay zoning that those garages can be closer to the street, that it's okay to do that. One of the other interesting things about this is that you see sort of a dividing line in, in our geography here, where this, it kind of slopes up along this angle here, there's a few areas that slope down and near the flats. But what you'll also note is that this is the area where we have our, our flat areas of our community and, and most of our smaller lots. And so what's interesting about this is we broke it down into parcel width, and we looked at, you know, well, so how many parcels of a certain width do we have in our community? And what, what this map shows is that we have a good deal of lots that are less than 60 feet in width. A lot of them are in the 40 or 50 foot range, that's the salmon color that you see on the screen. The green area represents those 60 foot lots, and then they get bigger from there. And what you'll also note about that last size, most of the larger lots are in those, those sloped areas of our community, as you can see here. So one of the other issues that came up very early in the process was, well, maybe we should look at our community as different neighborhoods, and, and perhaps we should, you know, identify those neighborhoods and, and apply special zoning where certain things are occurring. But once we saw this map, what we found is that because the lots are distributed pretty consistently in shapes and sizes throughout our community, it would be very challenging for us to break it off into special neighborhoods and things like that. So because it's very consistently scattered throughout our community, maybe we should look at, at some zoning techniques that would, that would work everywhere. And so of the almost 8,000 parcels that we have for single family, about 63% of those are less than or equal to 60 feet wide. So again, in terms of our community, and even in comparison to other communities, we have predominance of smaller lots. That we just got this map today, some people were asking, well, how many of these lots are less than 4,000 square feet? And there's very few, there's about 92 parcels, and you can see where those are distributed there as well. There's a few over in the White Oaks that might be buildable, we've, a couple of people have looked at it on the, on Google, and, and they say that they're really, really small, some of these, and they don't look developable. But there are a number that, that are. So in terms of our research, some of the key findings, in addition to the 63% of the small lots, we identified that the resultant floor area ratio in San Carlos is about, oh, around a .9, it, you know, a little higher, a little lower, but the average is around a .9. I'm going to talk about what FAR means in, in a little bit, but comparable peninsula cities, if we start looking at floor area ratio, which, which is a limiting factor on square footage that you can build, they have a median of about .53. We noted again that our hillside areas have specific and special characteristics and, and special issues and problems. And then one area that we do use FAR as a tool is to identify when something goes to the residential design review committee. And so our trigger for residential design review is a .4. In terms of some more key findings for lot coverage in FAR, in terms of lot coverage, over the nearly, nearly 100 applications over the last 10 years, what we've seen is, you know, this distribution in lot coverage, under 40%, 67, and some over 40, 44%, 22 of those. And then in terms of FAR, we did start to look at some of those homes, and we noted that about 55 or over a .5 FAR. So now I'm going to talk about the single family house advisory committee, and I'm going to talk about what they did and how they did it, and, and some of the thoughts that they, when they started to look at this information and started to talk about the issue of, you know, how to take this mass and make it look smaller. And Jeff Monckby already went through and introduced the Shack, but, so one of their charges was to look at these issues and then come back to the planning commission and city council with some recommendations for consideration. So one of the, in terms of the starting point, what they started with is, after looking at some of these things and looking at, at houses in our community, is they found that some of the best design practices used to manage size and bulk aren't encouraged or possible under our existing R6 standards. And so Shack started to look at ways to incentivize better design and use more rigid controls to control that mass. Now, when Shack finished with their work and, and throughout their, their discussion, they started to break things out, and they started to see areas where there could be changes and improvements. And so they came up with seven areas or topics for recommendations to the city council. And I'm not going to get into every area, we, we certainly can answer questions about all these areas, but I'm going to focus on a couple of things that I think are key to their, their ideas. And one of the key things is this concept of main body and, and wings, and how to control the bulk and mass of homes using this concept of main, concept of main body and wings. And if we go back to those examples that I showed you earlier when we took a Google Earth look at, at the Elm Street example, what we saw back there is, again, we saw these homes where you'd have that main structure, this, this, this rectangular or square, where you have the main body, you have the three bedroom, two baths. And so what they started to look at, well, what if we started to, you know, look and, and try to limit that, the biggest part of the house and make it smaller, just enough on these lots, so that you could get a three bedroom, two bath house, which they thought was a reasonable program for a family in San Carlos? And so they started to look at that, and what they said is also, if, if we do it, and if we make it, if you do it, and we can do it, they found out, like on a 50 foot wide lot, for instance, if we had 32 feet wide and 45 feet deep, you can get your three bedroom, two baths on the second floor. And then you can get your living area, your kitchen, your family room on the, on the ground floor. But you can also maybe add to that, and then you have your setbacks. And so they, they, these lines represent the setbacks. And so the other thing they, they thought about is, well, now, if you're in a neighborhood and, and you don't need the whole area for this, this, this box, maybe the box can move, move around, and it can be sensitive and respond to what's on either side of that, of that area. And so they said, and, and let's say it's not enough, let's say this, this main, main body concept just isn't enough for your family or whoever you are to, to build, what about allowing for, for wings? However, those wings, you know, shouldn't be too big, so what's a reasonable size for, for these wings? And they came up with a reasonable size. And they also said, well, if we attach these wings, maybe these wings should be able to move back and forth on the house as well, these side wings. So they're optional, you don't have to do it, but if you need to do it, you can. And, and the ones at the rear, if you put the, the wings at the rear of the building, well, you can't see those from the street. And if you want to put a garage on the side, well, the garage should be set back, because we saw earlier that the garages were beginning to dominate the front of, of the homes. So that's how these rear and side wings started to, to operate. So again, going back to Elm Street, we see that that's what was happening back, and that's maybe what made it nice to walk down Elm Street. When you walk down, you look at the house, it kind of makes sense, and it feels right. And it doesn't feel overwhelming as you walk down the street. So on the left hand side, you see the, the Shack idea and these wing ideas, and the wings were limited in scope. At first, they were, they said, well, let's try 18, the architects in the community said, well, you know, maybe look at something a little narrower and see if you can even add two of them and then have some space between them. And I think that the Shack was okay with that as well. So you can see the difference between the existing maximum build out envelope for zoning and the one on the left, where you start to see areas of the lot open up now. So this area is more set back than it, than it would be if it was, if it was right up to the five foot property line there. So another way to look at this, and the reason I'm, I'm really diving into this kind of deeply, is because this is a concept that was kind of hard to understand at first, and it took a while for folks to understand this concept. And so that's why I'm going into this level of detail. I think it's important to really kind of grasp this idea. So again, if we look at the 50 foot wide lots, which is what we saw on Elm Street, what we'll see is, again, this existing envelope, that's about 40 feet wide without the setbacks, and then you got your second floor setbacks of nine feet, and then you can go to about 65 feet. And what that does is that starts to take up a lot of the lot, and people were starting to talk about, well, they're, you know, these newer homes are starting to look down into my backyard. And so the Shack said, on this lot, if we, if we limit it to 28 feet wide and 45 feet in depth, well, you know, that, that would work, and then you could slide it around on the lot and, and add. So that is a limiting factor on the bulk and mass of the home, is it's this idea of a, of a ma, a form. So moving on, I want to try something, if I can just borrow the... One of the things that I wanted to do is kind of move things around and make it, see if I can make it even more clear. So this is again, let's say it's Elm Street, it's 50 feet wide, these areas are setbacks, this is the existing rear yard setback is 15 feet, and let's say you built, the, the guy here, the people here built to the, to the 15 foot setback and maxed it out. And this is a new setback area. So one of the things that the Shack said is that the rear yard setback should be set back more to open up the backyard. So with this, this concept, this, this envelope that we're creating should open up the backyard more, and so it should be further limited at the rear to provide more area for light and air and privacy at the rear. So they, they suggested a 20 foot first floor setback and a 25 foot second floor setback, a pretty significant setback in the rear yard to open it up. So let's say that, that this is your envelope. Now, if this is my main body, the concept, again, is this is limited to this, this amount. So this is, this is the amount that I get for a 50 foot wide lot. And let's say this person here built right up to the side property line, and this is that 30% adjustment that we allow. If I start to design this house, and I'm talking to my clients, and I'm talking to the residential design review committee, I start to look at, well, what's on either side? Well, this house on this side has a setback at the front of the street, and this one doesn't. So maybe that means that I move the box over to this side, being sensitive to the fact that this is a two story element, that if I move it right over here with my two stories, then you create more of a, you know, it's very much closer, there's privacy, light and air issues. So what this, this idea is, is that this would be context sensitive, you could move the box to be sensitive to the context of the neighborhood. So let's say I move it over to this side, and then I want to, let's say I want to add a, a wing at the back, I might add a wing there, and then I can, I can add a wing to the side, a wing over here, and they, they need to be apart from each other, and then maybe I put a little thing on the front. So that's what you end up with. And if you start to look at what I end up with, is a lot more green area, open space at the rear of the house and at the sides of the house. Some, at first, the, the Shack was recommending a five foot setback for the whole two story element. And the reason for that was, is because they said, well, it's a lot shorter, so it's okay to go right up to that five foot property line, but people were concerned about that. And so they, they looked at, well, okay, then we'll allow for a setback, a nine foot setback at the second floor like this guy has over here. And so that's the, the general concept. I hope that it's a little bit clearer. Moving on. So again, the main body concept, the size controls of those main body pieces were based on the dimensions of the lot. So if your lot was up to almost 50 feet, you got 28 feet in width, and then they were always 45 feet in depth. And again, that was to maintain that three bedroom, two bath floor plate on the top floor. And so what you end up with, for instance, on a house, we've seen this house a number of times in the process, and... Going back to that, let's see here. We've seen this house a number of times in the process, and the issue that, that we've heard is that, you know, this is, there was in a, there was a single family house there before, this is in a well-established neighborhood, and it's very large. And so this is about 50 feet in width, this house, but under the Shack recommendations, it would, the main body would then need, could only be 36 feet wide. And you can see where that part of the house, then this area of the house would need to be set back. So the garage would need to be set back away from the front. And so the primary thing that you see at the front as you walk down the street is, is this area of the home, which is a lot smaller. Just a couple of the other concepts before I conclude with the Shack recommendations. The garage placement and parking was a key consideration. Early on, the Shack talked about, well, right now, we require a two space enclosed, two parking spaces to be enclosed in a garage, and, well, what if we allowed one space to be enclosed in the garage, and then, but you still have to have two parking spaces on the lot? And so that's what they did, is they, they said, okay, you know, you could have it in a single car configuration, but you'd have to have two. Now, we also found that it's very, very difficult to get two garage spaces on a 40 foot wide lot, it becomes very difficult. And again, that piece of the house becomes dominant on the front. So that was one of the areas where there was, where there was agreement on the planning commission and the Shack, there was agreement that, that there could be a one car garage. The planning commission went further and said, well, if you're going to do that, you have to have a 20 foot wide driveway. And these are just showing some other configurations that are possible under the Shack recommendations. So what that ended up with, if, if you start to look at the numbers and the breakdown there, is you'll see that, at the top of the screen, you'll see our existing conditions in terms of our zoning envelope. And based on our setbacks and our zoning envelope, you'll see lot coverages in the, near the 50 foot range, and then you'll see that we're about a 90.9 FAR floor area ratio. And, and so what you see, if you apply the Shack standards to various lot sizes, and depending on where the location of the garage is, then you start to see a reduction in that floor area ratio of about 20%. Same thing with the lot coverage, the lot coverage goes down as well. So it did have an effect on the numer- So it did have an effect on the numerical standards of the homes, but that wasn't how the Shack started out. They started out, well, how can we approach it in a form-based manner? Look at the forms of the homes and approach it like that. And so what did we hear? So once those issues were presented to the public, some of the things that we heard are the recommendations are too prescriptive. They're very complicated and there's a preference for simpler controls. Some of the architects were concerned about the complexity of, and that, you know, they'd have to change their model in terms of how to help their clients design homes. On the other hand, some people believe that the recommendations are a good start, but they don't go far enough. And additional controls should be included, something like a numerical standard, like an FAR or a daylight plane. And so I'm going to stop there for now and allow the Shack members to add anything that I missed. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and start back up after that discussion.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything to add? If you are, you'll need to come up and speak to the microphone.
I think we have a microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't realize you had one. Great.
Hi. My name is Christian Besh. I was one of the Shack members. I think there's a few important things to understand about Shack in terms of its, both its composition, its purpose, its limitations. The intent was to have a body that was fairly representative of resident input. I enjoyed meeting and working with everyone on the commission. The intent was to have three people involved in building, design, real estate, et cetera, and four people that were residents with no professional involvement in building. And we ended up with a supermajority of five people who were involved in some capacity and a minority in two. So that, I think, it's worth noting. The Shack's recommendations, I know Al likes to call them Shack recommendations. I think it's also important to know, I've made this point at pretty much every meeting, is that we were an advisory body. We were not the people to draft the recommendations that came forward. In fact, there's no one on the committee that was an expert in form-based design, which is, at this point, very clear about the direction that we ended up going. And that was the approach considered from the very beginning. We didn't step back and say, what are some of the other ways that we might be able to resolve the issue of home size? Nor, to my knowledge, did we speak with peer communities. So I will say at the end of the day that there was perhaps a, I think the thing important to know is there was not unanimity on Shack in terms of what came forward, that we responded to specific recommendations brought by the consultant Opticos and said, yes, we like the concept of a garage setback. That's one thing that I think all of us agreed on. There were other things that there was general agreement on, such as what can we do to incentivize homes on a single story? But I just think we need to be careful in two areas. One is that I don't think Shack is necessarily representative of average San Carlos residents, number one. And number two, the recommendations that we're looking at are Opticos and the city recommendations, to which Shack provided a response. So I think those are meaningful clarifications to make about the purpose, composition, and role that we played in doing this. So that's what I wanted to add.
Hi, my name's Adam Cates. I was one of the resident homeowner members of the committee and I am also in the homebuilding business. My company works on a minimum of like 10-lot subdivisions. I've never done, and we've never done any business in San Carlos. So I felt very comfortable serving as a homeowner member of the committee without concern of any kind of conflict. Having said that, I would like to point out a couple things about the process and then a brief critique on some of the recommendations of the committee. The committee's process presupposed that a form-based code would be best and that an FAR would lead to unpredictable design outcomes. I think that the recommendations of the committee would lead to attractive architecture, but upon reflection, I have some critiques of the recommendations of the committee, of which I was a member. One is the recommendations for the zoning amendments are difficult to understand and therefore would be even harder to implement. They would remove design flexibility that ties the hands of talented designers who have to deal with nuanced lots and context. Three, it prioritizes attractive architecture over harmonious neighbor relations. For example, allowing a two-story wall that's 45 feet long, four or five feet off a side property line, I think, would, when implemented, lead to heightened tensions between neighbors. In practice, that would probably result in the applicant favoring being closer to the smaller one-story homes, so their second-story windows would look over that structure. And then two more quick critiques. One is, I was a big advocate of allowing one-car garages. I think it works well in the neighborhood I'm in, in Britton Acres. However, I wouldn't want to prohibit a two-car garage at the front of the lot. I think that would be an important trade-off for a homeowner to decide where they wanted more livable area or the two-car garage that was easily accessible. And then lastly, my main problem, which I expressed during the process, or that I struggled with, was it seemed like the recommendations led to a disincentive for one-story homes. I live in a house that was 1430 square feet, built in the 50s. We added on, we did a one-story addition. We're under 1,800 square feet now and it works great for us. If the lot coverage were reduced, we wouldn't be able to do that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Stafford, and I want to thank everyone for coming together. You know, Stephen Jobs once remarked that creativity is just connecting the strands. And I'd like to offer that tonight, we're very much in that spirit, connecting the strands of neighborhood, community concerns with bulk and massing, which I share, staff concerns with how to solve the problem, a planning commission that adroitly, I think, picked the ball up from us to try to figure out how to shape this with input from architects, and of course, the council here this evening. I think that these bodies are really here to step back and say that historically, we've had reasonable assurances of how people are going to build. And so if you did a Venn diagram and you had that history as one circle and you had another one as where we are today and then where we want to go, I think the problem in connecting these is that there's a presupposition of good taste of, if we just have the magical FAR, that one size fits all, or like one architect said, I can give you a sliding scale. Well, it should be noted, go through these other communities that have an FAR that's lower. The houses are giant. Go to the corner of Alameda and Carmelita, the two houses you just went in, 4,000 square feet, they'd be at, what, 50% FAR? An FAR is a false, in my opinion, reductionist way to try to control good design. It's true, what Stefan came up with was, it was complex. Someone described it as being progressive. Complex, progressive, Silicon Valley, seems to fit. I think the challenge is that for the planning commission in particular, I watched, I'm a government major, I love government. Bob Lanzano always said, that was a sign you have a mental problem, you know, local government. But I watched him, you could see you guys grappling because you're trying to drink from a fire hydrant. Too much, too quick. If an architect says, this is the panacea, it's like the baker saying, hey, more flour. Well, that's a no-brainer because it keeps it easy. This isn't going to be easy. I was down in Carmel 15 years ago with the same challenges and they did a lot of what this community is trying to do. I think staff has the right idea with the FAR at 70% because if you take that Venn diagram, what's missing is a fourth circle that brings it into four, bad Feng Shui, state requirements for ADUs. Where is the legal overlay, which hasn't been dealt with yet, is what a lower FAR would do to the legal mandate from our governor, who's great, who signed great bills from the Senate and Assembly, that dictate cities can't interfere with ADUs? If this goes to this 50%, like, you know, I forget the name of the group, good San Carlos people, and they are good people, but the unintended consequence is you are pushing out ADUs.
Bob, I'm sorry, I'm an acronym banana here. ADU, what is that?
Accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Okay, for the public, if not for me. Thanks.
You know, there's a host of assembly bills. If you just, if you Google them, you can see them, 1397. But there's also Assembly Bill 72. Assembly Bill 72 is a hammer on those towns that don't follow the mandate from the governor. So I think really the question is, hey, there's a lot of great people in this room. Smart, capable, too much, too quick. We have an election in two months. The two people, Mayor Collins has great experience, I know with heart, Mark Albert, I mean, can study everything three times over. My understanding is that you two were the ones that started this, or you were the two on two. So without putting you on the spot, I think you two are going to be here next year and you'll have three new council members. And one of our members, I think she'll probably get elected, there's a lot of signs out there. But I would like to say that I think one of the options is to table it and not do anything and go to a hybrid, which is the council gives more input and look at the legal responsibilities the community has to follow state mandated requirements. To end it on a sort of a funny note, I saw a strange quote from Charles Nelson Riley, he used to be on Hollywood Squares. And he said, you know, I had horrible dental work, I got to go to the dentist again. What are you having done? He said, well, I'm having my third set of teeth put in and they're going to do it with screws and nails. That's sort of this. Legislative work is not comfortable, but what's happening now is screws and nails. And I guarantee it's not going to work if the idea is a reductionist FAR to 50%. You need 70% to allow aging in. You need 70% to get to a spot of harmony so you can have the more sophisticated design elements on the second floor. The FAR is really reductionist. So other than that, I think it's great that everyone's here trying to figure it out.
My name's Ray Viati. I was the architect on the board. To kind of go with Christian said, the staff came and Opticos came with kind of a form-based architecture, which has some great results, but it's going to create, also create some problems that the original people came about with wanting better, bigger setbacks for a second story. And then there was the other thing that Adam brought up about wanting to, you know, reward people that want to do a single story. Give them incentive so that you can do that. And that kind of gets away when you just look at a form-based thing and taking bigger setbacks. We need to look at ways to incentivize people, to put the garage in the back, to keep it to a single story. I mean, it's, there's, everybody has their own taste, I think. Robert set it up. Everybody has their own taste in architecture, what they want to do, and that should still be able to be done. I think that you've got, I think Robert hit the nail on the head. We can't just force this through. We need to look at it a little bit longer because it has so many ramifications. When you look at what's going up nowadays in our town, you've got some, yes, they're big houses because everybody wants to have the spaces they need, but they're being nicely done. They're not being like the houses that were going up in San Mateo in like the mid-'80s where it's just a big giant box with stucco on the outside. There's nice materials, there's nice forms going in them. And we want to keep, you want to keep a variety in the architecture. And that's another thing that needs to be looked at here. You want a modern house next to a craftsman. Everybody has their own taste. It's similar when you go down the older streets. You've got the kind of shingle-style house on one side, and then you've got a Spanish style on the other. You want variety. And we don't want to just put everything into one specific pinhole.
I'll keep this very short. I just wanted to make one other comment because it's a very high-level comment that I think we in the city and the planning commission, the city council, all need to keep in mind is, I think there's a way in which the issue that has us all here today has been characterized as bulk size and mass, which is kind of an antiseptic way of describing the problem. But I would encourage us all to think about, why do we care about those elements? Why are those issues that are worth investing this much time and energy trying to solve? And I really think it boils down to two reasons. One is that there is an impact on neighbors that has to do with privacy, light, and air. It was very evident during the lot split discussion. So there is, what is your experience and your quality of life in the home that you may have lived in for one decade, two or more? And the second is, what is your experience in your neighborhood? What's it like when you walk down the street? Does it feel coherent? Is there character? Or does it look like something was dropped down, you know, from a completely different environment? So I would just say, keep in mind that this is about people. This is about residents and how we feel in our city. It's how, the quality of life we have in our home. It's not about abstracts here. And so I just wanted to reinforce that. Any others? Shack?
Okay. Very good. So moving on, so what we heard from the local architects with regard to some of the Shack recommendations is that they, you know, if you're going to do something like this, then we need to have more flexibility, particularly there was concern about oddly-shaped lots, desire for more closely spaced wings and other details. There was a preference for less restricted placement of two-car garages than was proposed, and assurance that you could still have a two-car wide driveway. Primary house entrances, they wanted them to be on the side of the house, not just on the front facing the street, and then using trees and landscaping for buffers. Some of the things that we heard from the public throughout the process is a desire for floor area ratio limits, concerns especially of two-story homes next to single-story homes, protection of privacy and views, I think we've heard. People talked about a concept called daylight plane and a protection of solar panels if you're going to put those in or you have them, a desire for more public noticing of the Residential Design Review Committee. And the process has either been too fast or it's been too slow. What we heard from Good Growth San Carlos, I think that Christian mentioned some of those things. Again, a desire for some floor area ratio limits, adjusting the rear yard setbacks might be okay if you, to help preserve neighborhood privacy, if you combine it with an FAR, maintain a 50% lot coverage if combined with a reasonable FAR, take measures to protect privacy and light, require solar studies, improve the process for the Residential Design Review Committee. That Shack only considered one central idea, the form-based code that we heard about and not floor area ratio, and the process was not appropriate or it was rushed. And I think that we did hear those concerns. In terms of the planning commission evaluation, so the Shack recommendations went to the planning commission. As I noted earlier, there was a very in-depth study session process. Also, we had a number of new members. We met individually with those folks to, you know, help to bring them up to speed on zoning and what was being discussed with regard to the work that Shack was doing. So they had three study sessions. They had, in addition to those three study sessions, they had a public hearing. There was public testimony. They didn't limit public testimony. They took all the public testimony that everybody wanted to provide. They did disclose that they had meetings with individuals, so they were talking to different parties about these issues. They considered public correspondence, they focused study with staff, and they evaluated a lot of different things. They listened to people that wanted the FAR, they looked at daylight plane, they looked at the Shack regulations. So there was very, very thoughtful deliberation by the planning commission. So some of the options that were considered in response to the input, so once, you know, maybe the first one were talking about Shack and then after listening to the community, they started... they started to express interest in other ideas, and some of the other ideas that, or options that were considered are the Shaq recommendations, and then the architects made specific requests, can you add these things to the Shaq recommendations to make them more workable for us? And we found that many, if not all, of those things could be added. They asked to look at FAR and floor area ratio and what it, what it means, and not just a sliding scale FAR that's used in other communities, and I'll show you what that looks like, along with the Shaq recommendations, and then they considered a flat FAR, meaning just one number, FAR, as opposed to, you know, sliding based on your, on your lot size, and they looked at different lot coverages. So at their September 4th Planning Commission meeting, they gave the city staff direction, and their direction was, after consideration of all this information and listening to the public and others, that they wanted to look at floor area ratio as a controlling mechanism for house size in our community. So they asked us to bring back some more information about that, which we did, and we looked at maintaining, they expressed some interest in maintaining the 50% lot coverage. At the very beginning of the presentation, I noted that we had gone from 40 to 50% back in 2011, and somewhat counterintuitive in that, well, that means that you're going to get a bigger house, but what we found through the process is that it would also allow you to spread that first floor on the lot as opposed to the second floor, so give you more options for spreading out your square footage on the first floor and perhaps reducing second floors or second stories. For lots 60 feet wide or less, they did express interest in allowing for that one-car garage covered space, but only if you had a two-car wide driveway, so that's one of the recommendations that came forward. And then they agreed that notification for Residential Design Review Committee should be expanded to 300 feet, and to revise the hillside overlay zone to make houses up on the hills look smaller as well. So what is maximum floor area ratio? I know we've talked about it a lot, and what it is, is basically it's a numerical standard, as opposed to some of these architectural ideas that we've been talking about, the form-based codes.
Excuse me, Al?
Yes?
So Shaq spoke, when, is Planning Commission going to get a chance to speak to, or they...
They will, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I thought it would be on now, all right, sorry.
I'll finish their recommendations and then open it up to the Planning Commission. And so what we noticed that currently San Carlos does not have a numerical standard FAR like this, a formula that says, you know, based on your lot size, you only get this amount of square footage. We don't have that now. The Planning Commission, again, requested those options to look at, so we prepared some options for them to consider. One was a two-step sliding scale, and I'll show you what that looks like, that basically reduces the square footage as the lot gets bigger, and then a flat FAR cap, again, one number, 50%, 56%, et cetera, and no sliding scale. So they considered different things. So they started to look at some data from neighboring jurisdictions, and here's what you see from some of these other cities in our county, similar cities, Belmont, San Mateo, Burlingame, Menlo Park, Redwood City, and San Carlos, as you can see, and as I noted in our, in my earlier comments, that our envelope allows for about a .9, .9 range FAR when you take out the setbacks. The median FAR, if you look at all these other cities, is a .53 without San Carlos, and so that's what you see from that data set. So this idea of a two-step calculation is, and what's, we like to do is look at other communities and see what they're doing, is that in San Mateo and Menlo Park, we thought that those were good examples of how to use it, and so any amount over 6,000 square feet gets an additional .2 for those, that community, and in Menlo Park, it's over 7,000 square feet, you get a little more. So they looked at establishing a base floor area ratio for lots less than 6,000 square feet, and then for lots over 6,000 square feet, utilizing this ratio plus reduced floor area. And so here's some of the options that they looked at. Again, it's over 6,000 square feet as a cutoff was a suggestion. The first option would be, starting at a .50 FAR and increasing with 20 or a .20, and you can see how that works. And then on the right side of the screen, you have the other option with a .25 at those same base FARs, and you see the results. And of course, we can always go back and take a look at these things in more detail if you like. And then a flat FAR would be something where you just said, okay, everybody gets 50%, or everybody gets 53% or 59%, and those are the results. And these FARs always include the garage, the garage is always included, along with the floor area. So on September 17th, the Planning Commission came up with a series of recommendations based on consideration of all these, all the information in their evaluation of floor area ratio, the form-based codes, and public comment. What they recommend is that you establish a floor area ratio that is a maximum floor area that is the greater of 1,000 square feet plus 35% of the lot area, or 50% of the lot area, and in either case, you get, you could have the larger square footage. Garages that are detached and located 40 feet away from the front property may exclude the garage, up to 450 square feet. Basements would be exempt, as long as they're no more than three feet above grade. And the green areas, the four and five, are the areas where there was agreement in their approach with the Single Family House Advisory Committee, that those rear setbacks should be increased to 20 feet on the first floor and 25 feet on the second floor, the existing is 15. And then allow that option to have a one-car parking, but you have to have a two-car wide driveway to get that option. Up to 200 square feet of front porches with two sides open would be exempt from lot coverage calculation, provided it's at a reasonable height. Up to 250 square feet of unenclosed roof decks that are lined with or below the lowest floor level would be exempt from lot coverage calculations. Expand public notification to 300 feet, and again, there was agreement that the hillside overlay zone should be changed to control the appearance of height for some homes, for the walls in particular, to kind of squeeze the walls down a little bit so that the houses up on the hillsides don't look as tall. And then the basements should be reduced as well. Sometimes those basements start to peak up above grade up to six feet, and you might look like two and a half or even three stories in those circumstances. And then finally, recommended that if adopted, that the council consider a grace period of about 90 days after adoption. And then I think that there was also agreement between the Shaq and the Planning Commission that, we heard a lot about the Residential Design Review process, and there's a feeling that the Residential Design Review Committee didn't have enough authority or teeth to do what they needed to do and to make changes to the design of homes that were being presented to them. And so what they, what the Planning Commission is recommending is that the council request that staff begin working on these guidelines that could then be provided to the Shaq that they could use to give them more authority to make changes. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'm available, oh, and one last thing, so the maximum FAR graph, so basically what this shows is a culmination of the FAR information. And at the top of the screen, you see the existing resultant FARs, I've been discussing it, about a .9 approximately. We have a .7 around that range, that was the resultant FAR of the Shaq recommendations. And then we have, we have Good Growth San Carlos, was something that they recommended to the Planning Commission, and then we have the other cities average, about a .53 sliding scale down there, and then we have the Planning Commission recommendation in green, and you can see the numbers that are associated with that. So with that, I would like to offer the opportunity for the Planning Commission to comment as well.
You gentlemen have a microphone over there? No, you can use the microphone, it's fine. If you turn it on, it works better, but hopefully.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Doesn't seem to be working, maybe. Is it? Have to close, no, it's not working. Yeah, maybe we could borrow theirs, theirs seemed to work really well. Thank you.
Better?
No. No. Technical assistance, please. That's it, that's it.
I think it's, I think that's it.
That's fine, Don, stand there, no problem, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilman, Commission, Shaq, and residents of the city of good living. I'm Don Bradley, it's my honor...
You're going to have to speak though into that microphone, sir, otherwise we're not going to hear you. Sorry if you want to keep turning, but you're going to have to sort of focus, sorry.
It's my honor to be the Chair of the Planning Commission, which I've been on two years. Last year, I was Chair of the Residential Design Review Committee. I am a planner by profession, I'm a psychologist also, which leads to what you were talking about, it's helpful. I've written several zoning ordinances, but years ago, none was a form-based one, but I did favor the form-based concept that the staff and the consultants came up with first when the Planning Commission started our study sessions and public hearings on it. I actually preferred to make it simple, the FAR, the floor area ratio, and lot coverage of 50 and 50, a little lower than most you saw on the, on the chart there. But planning is complicated, planning is about compromise. Every one of us in the Planning Commission and Shaq has made compromises to help our community work together better and come up with better standards in this process. I also was interested in ADUs, accessory dwelling units, story and a half, that we saw a good example of that there tonight on the screen, in order to let more light and protect privacy of neighbors on the larger houses building on these smaller lots. That is what our task was, because people were complaining about too big a houses on too small a lots, too much mass, and ugly two and three garage doors without much let I have a lot of notes here, but I don't want to keep you any longer than necessary, I'll just say this, that we met until after midnight on our last study session to get this in, because I thought it was important that we get this to the Commission now, before there's an election and three brand-new people. I also want to compliment, these three gentlemen sitting up here have only been on the Planning Commission for two months, and they came in right at the time when this was heating up at the Planning Commission level, from the recommendations of Shaq, we considered the architects and Good Growth San Carlos, but as I say, it's a lot of compromise. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to do the best I can to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Is anyone else from the Commission willing, want to speak about stuff?
Sure.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, my name's John Dugan, joined the Commission in June, and yeah, it's been an interesting couple of months on the Planning Commission.
How's the deep end of that pool working for you?
Well, I told my wife I wanted to get involved, so I think I achieved that right off the bat here, so if we could, could we just go back a slide to where we're looking at that far comparison chart? I think that's just pretty illustrious of what we were thinking about and what we were wrestling with the past month and a half. So really, you know, we obviously greatly appreciated inheriting a lot of good work and effort from the Shaq, you know, and we were very, you know, we understood we were coming in at the tail end of a nearly two-year-long process, and, you know, there was a lot of good thinking and a lot of staff work involved in that. As we wrestled with that, you know, we definitely also heard from the community that they were concerned about the large massing of houses in the community, and a lot of questions on whether the Shaq recommendation would really solve that problem. We also had a concern that the operation of that main body and wing and pulling that lot coverage in would actually push mass of the house up to the second floor, which seemed not at all what we wanted to do here. So that really did cause us to kind of open up our study sessions and look at these options that Al did a nice job of covering our process. So what I just wanted to say at this point was, you know, we heard the community that they definitely wanted more done here, and it made sense to us as well, and I think this chart does represent, you know, the top line there, just make sure everyone's oriented, that represents what you can do today in San Carlos, pretty generous standard, and that is likely what has resulted in some houses that have raised concern in the community. The blue line underneath that is the approximation of what the Shaq recommendation with that main body and wing forms-based approach would have accomplished. So that alone represented a significant reduction in building envelope, but we were somewhat persuaded that we ought to see what our neighboring communities are up to, and we did take a look at that, and it, you know, and then actually looking at the ability to build based on the various lot sizes, you know, we came to basically a compromised position that represented what we thought was a good balancing of the needs of people to meet the needs of their family on the lot that they happen to have, as well as not being overly restrictive on some of our largest lots, which has not been raised as a concern. So if you look, the green line actually represents what we're recommending, and you can see it's, it very closely matches what the other cities in the area have been doing, and what it also accomplishes is slightly more generous on some of our smaller lots. If you go to a 4,000-foot lot, which I believe about 12% of our lots in town are roughly that size, our recommendation allows for, if you count 300-foot garage, about 2,100 square feet of living area, which, you know, that can meet the needs of a family, we don't view that as overly generous or necessarily a massive house. So we like where that curve ends up at the left edge, and then as you go out to the right edge, we decided that having that flattened out at 50% left us in line with, number one, it's a major reduction from what's allowed today, and we don't want to lose sight of that. But number two, that also represents, at least when I had met with the folks from Good Growth San Carlos, at that time, they were recommending a 50% lot coverage and a 50% flat floor area ratio across all lot areas, and so that's basically what we mapped to, towards the right-hand side for lots over 6,600 square feet, was just to go to that 50% floor area ratio. And then just my final comment is, just especially looking at this graph, you know, this is a major step to solve this problem. I mean, this is a significant reduction in planning. I mean, this is a significant reduction in planning envelope, and a very strong first step. And we can certainly take this first step, monitor the situation, and adjust from there going forward. And that was really the base of our, of our recommendation.
Thank you. Good, Jim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Thank you all very much for appointing us, me, to this task. It's been, actually, it's been great, and the input from staff, the input from Opticos, the input from Good Growth San Carlos, other members of the public, has really been informative. I'd like to be additive and not repeat a number of the comments that have been made. I would say the form-based approach is indeed sophisticated, it's innovative, I think that was pointed out. And at the end of the day, it left me believing that it didn't get to, it didn't clearly get to the root point that many of the public were, had issue with, and that was big houses on small lots. And what, what was compelling about the notion of a floor area ratio was it set a very clear upper limit, which then gave us the, the starting point, well, what might be appropriate? And we heard from a couple of architects, a couple of citizens, a discussion amongst ourselves and with staff. And the notion is, is actually, this is most important on the smaller lots, and the idea of a total of 2,400 square foot on a 4,000-square-foot lot, some of that devoted to garage, left a reasonable opportunity for a family to build a comfortable, attractive, valuable home. And then from there, we looked to address other issues, like rear, the rear backyard of homes, and increasing the setback and looking to create more space in the back, retaining the second-story setback such so that you wouldn't end up with houses all right on the property line, and also would encourage not with a 20-foot on the first floor and a 25-foot setback on the second floor, you'd actually encourage houses and with the second story to not be looking directly over a neighbor's backyard. We considered basements and encouraging basements so that for those who wanted to, they could actually increase the size of their home without having that be above ground. We encouraged the, the garage to be at the back of the lot, as you heard Al mention. And I think that, in total, it was the idea of, at least from my perspective, of capping large homes on small lots. Now, again, large is in the eyes of the beholder. Some people may not think 2,400 square foot on 4,000 is appropriate, but from my perspective, capping large homes on small lots while still leaving larger homes incentive to build and capture value on theirs. And then I think the, the two last points, I would first say that there are points about size and there are points about form or attractiveness. And I think our work really looked at size. And I think the open issue for us as a Planning Commission for City Council was about form and relative placement versus neighbors and appropriateness for the neighborhood. And just to pick up on Al's points about our recommendation to Council, we think it really important to empower the Planning Commission to be allowed to very directly guide the architectural standard, the placement of homes, the design of homes within this set of guidelines, so that at the end of the day, we can help neighbors, listen to neighbors well, result in, in streets and neighborhoods that look good but aren't all one style, therefore creating some space, and, and also to make sure that the wishes of neighbors are brought very directly into the conversation, but also not allowed to override the wishes of the homeowner. So hopefully that gives you some perspective on where our recommendations are, came out, at least from my perspective.
Great, thank you. David?
David Roof, David Roof, and I'm also a new member of the Planning Commission, and I am grateful for the opportunity to, to contribute to our community. And I'm also really grateful for members of the community who have provided really thoughtful feedback to, to the Planning Commission and highly influenced what our recommendations were in the end. The FAR as a tool, I have concern that it isn't necessarily going to solve the problem, because some of the example houses that we were shown as being overly massive did not have that great of an FAR. So it's a, it's a delicate tool, and small differences in the percentage, the difference between .53 and .6 is a large difference on the house. The difference between point, um, um, .53 and .6 at the 4,000-square-foot lot would be a 280-square-foot additional floor area, which is a 16-square-foot room, which might be on the second story overlooking a neighbor's yard. So the, the small differences in, in the lines you see there actually could have a really large difference in, in the result. I really wanted the form-based approach to, to work, because it provided flexibility and it was sophisticated, but that flexibility was both its power, but its downfall in my eyes, because the, in order for it to work, to make it good for the neighbor, it would require the home remodeler to prioritize the neighbor's concern versus their concerns over the interior layout. And so sensitivity to context only works, it works great if you have an unbiased architect designing the neighborhood, but it may not work well with a, because you can't enforce sensitivity to context. And overall, I agree with the package that we brought forward as the Planning Commission. I think allowing one-car garages, some extra flexibility, encouraging more floor area on the ground level are, are nice tools and a step in the right direction. Ultimately, I was the one dissenting vote, because, because I felt that the FAR numbers that we came up with were, although small in numerical percentage, actually pretty large difference in, in effect compared to what the Good Growth San Carlos people were recommending. And so I'm afraid that with the version, the green line, the graph that's before you, we would still have lots of homes that would be massive.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Al, then the next step would be the Growth San Carlos presentation? Okay, so who's gonna be giving that?
Brent and I will be.
Okay, so it's 20 minutes? Okay. Do you want me to tell you when there's five minutes left, or?
Sure.
Happy to.
I put a timer up here, too.
Yeah. You don't trust that timer, though?
Uh, well, that's two minutes.
Set the timer, I'll, I got a big clock there, I can handle this. I went to high school math, so I can handle this.
Okay, first of all, we are extremely appreciative of the opportunity to spend 20 minutes with you and answer some questions. I think one of the foundational concerns we've had through this process is, there has been a concern that we have heard amongst people who come to us for information and to keep current on this issue, that residents have stood up over months and across many different channels and expressed very clear interest in having standards aligned with peer communities. And we didn't see any of that input reflected in the recommendations being brought forward by the city until, I believe, the first time a FAR-based approach was offered in a Planning Commission meeting was on September 4th. And on September 17th, because the rest of the time, 18 months or so had been spent on the form-based approach. So let's see, we're gonna go through this. Before we launch in, because we didn't anticipate that form-based would be as much in play as it appears potentially to be, I'd like to say one or two things about that as a Shack member. I thought, item by item, idea by idea, there's a lot in there that's appealing and that can potentially make sense. My own view on it changed for a couple reasons. One is, if you look at the results in FARs, they're basically in the 70% to 79% range, which is 35% to 45% above what all our peer cities do. So I had a very difficult time believing that the form-based solution alone would solve the problem. And that's the question that we want to encourage you to ask, is are the steps we are taking solving the issues that were raised by residents as being concerns for the city, both its character and their own experience in their homes? So there were a lot of good ideas, but at the end of the day, it still allowed homes that by any other measure or standard seemed quite large, so we had no proof that it really was gonna solve the issue. The other things that I became convinced, once I saw a stream of architects come up and stand at the podium and raise questions and concerns with form-based, and briefly, they range from the amount of angles and articulation in the roof, and the cost that imposes, and also the difficulty of putting solar on it. There was a question about how does this apply to remodels, that was a little bit less clear. The notion that wings require hallways, hallways eat up a space, living space, how does this work on irregular lots? And then a core issue was people said, well, how do I know what I can build on this? And we think it's important for investors, buyers, builders, owners to know really what they can build without hiring an architect to come up with a number. And, and one of the beauties of a FAR-based approach is that in fact, it allows you, with some simple arithmetic, to decide, understand what you can build. So a couple comments on the FAR. So Good Growth San Carlos, can we go forward? Yeah. Whoops. So we, just briefly, our focus has been since we organized about two years ago was to make sure that there was a strong resident voice in this process of looking at zoning standards. And here are the seven principles that we set out, as, as being important, we believe, to residents and a livable community that balances the rights of all residents, not just the new ones, but the existing ones. And I think we're making really good progress on many of these. However, number one on the list is house size, and that's at, at its core what drives many of the other issues. So that's why we're here. Again, I want to encourage you to consider the fact that really, it's not in the abstract that we care about bulk size and masses, but it's because what happens to neighbors and to neighborhoods. And I know it's been almost two years since the City Council meeting on lot splits, but I, I've attended every single meeting the city has had on this issue. I don't know if you all recall some of the testimonials or the public comment from people who were next to lots where splits had occurred and large homes had been built. What struck me was their statements were moving, sometimes they were embittered. It had been an extreme experience for them to essentially have something go up next door that really didn't protect their privacy or their light or their air in their home. So this is one example, and just again, to keep in mind why we're here and what problem we're trying to solve. So there's been a lot of input provided by residents. This is the original 2016 Shape San Carlos survey, at which time, 78% of residents said they'd like to see home standard limitation, restrictions about the same or more restrictive than in neighboring communities. It's interesting that we are now rerunning the survey, it has some different questions, but it looks to me, after over 100 responses as of today, that we're gonna get some pretty similar data back. And as an example, the very first question in the current survey is, do you believe new single-family homes being built in San Carlos are too big? Well, it turns out 72% say yes, 17 and a half say no, and a little, almost 11 are undivided. So by a four-to-one margin, San Carlos residents are telling us that they believe that new homes being built in San Carlos are too big. Should the city, city set a maximum square footage on single-family homes? The response there is 68% yes, 23% no, and that's actually, that's, if you kind of look at it as a ratio, that's almost, it's 2.9 to one in favor of having a maximum, and who knows, many people may have considered this, should we have a size cap, the way it's been asked? That's actually up from the data of two years ago, where the ratio of people favoring a maximum was only 2.4 to one, now it's almost three to one in favor of that. So we're getting some more data on this, but it's not telling us a different story. So we want to say that there are a lot of things that have, are positive in this set of recommendations, and so we're not here to say that we haven't made progress, we want to acknowledge that and be very clear about what we support in the current set of recommendations that the Planning Commission sent forward to the City Council. Beginning with the restoration of rear setbacks, which is huge. I happen to know in Burlingame, they set the front, the front setback based on the average of other homes, and that acknowledges that disparate setbacks in a community are one element that very easily lead to problems. We believe in the increase in neighbor notification from, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of keeping track on time here. Neighborhood notification is also a real positive. Some houses on my street that have been either razed and built as, as spec homes, I didn't hear about because I was a little beyond the 150-foot radius, but it's certainly on my block and in my community. There was a lot of conversation on Shack amongst people about the notion of keeping a very generous lot area coverage, because I think all of us recognize that the single thing that generates the, the most significant impact on neighbors is when you go from one story to two. So if it's possible to give people the flexibility to meet their family needs on a single story, we view that as extremely positive. And that works well as long as the FAR is in that neighborhood. It's interesting to note that Palo Alto establishes their lot area coverage, it's the same as the FAR. So they say you can build a FAR, and lot area coverage will be whatever you come up with the FAR, and I think they're in, as well as an intent to say, let's give you the ability to get what you need on a single story. I'd also note that the average in most other cities is, is 40%. So this is 25% more generous in terms of lot coverage than most other cities, and I would mention Menlo Park, Belmont, and Burlingame, all limit lot area coverage at 40%. The reason we support it is because we believe that single-family homes are both in character with the city and, and increase the likelihood that there will not be these substantial negative impacts. And lastly, it's not that we're deaf to the notion that people on small lots have families, have needs as well, and I think it's important to recognize that some very meaningful accommodations were made in this process to give people on small homes more space than before. So by reducing the garage requirement from two to one, you've essentially added 225 square feet of living space to a resident on a 4,000-square-foot lot, which accounts to, it's like increasing the floor area ratio by 5%. It gives them an additional 5% of livable space on their lot. We have also excluded the front porch from the lot area coverage, and excluded any uncovered, I guess this is decks, from the lot area coverage calculation. So there were some accommodations made that we think make a lot of sense. So all of those, to those we say excellent, let's, we're supporters of those measures.
Christian, I call out one thing as we get into this graph right here. So the other graph that...
Yep, the other graph that we were looking at a little earlier, I, I think, I know where that came from. The recommendation that Good Growth San Carlos had in that other graph was not exactly correct, because we took the city's analysis, which originally had 25% additional... because we took the city's analysis, which originally had 25% additional square footage as one of the options, and we were actually a proponent of making that 30%. So, this chart right here, I think, is the correct data from us. It has a little more nuance in it. You can also see, with having taken out the current line, which is up in the 90s and so forth, you can see more of the nuance in terms of where various lines sit. And the last comment before, turn this back to Christian for a minute, is lots of ways to calculate pure city data. Our data in this particular chart includes Palo Alto, which city staff did not include, and they have their logic and reasons for that. Four different ways that we had pure city sets and looking at data. This is the one that we chose to include here.
Brent's exactly right, that this does not include the current San Carlos line. I want to speak to, and I've communicated with the council around this notion of resultant reductions. This idea that we have somehow made a substantial decrease in the size of homes by taking a FAR between 90 and 95, when our peer cities, if you look at the peer line, the blue line, begins at like 54.8 and ends up down at 10,000 square feet at 40%. So, we in San Carlos had house size, permissible house size, that was literally 2X of other cities up and down the peninsula, if you were to take the median. So, reducing that by 30%, really, it's a theoretical and not a real reduction. And I think what we need to solve the problem are real, real, meaningful limits. So, as you can see, the green line is what we've proposed. It begins at 53% and goes up to 6,000 square feet at that rate. Thereafter, we did go back and look at the numbers, and we've really worked hard to be kind of data-driven, evidence-based, to say, "What works? What kind of distribution of lots do we have? What's a reasonable place to be? And how does it compare to peer cities?" So, we're seeking to align with other cities on the peninsula, not do anything more restrictive. So, you can kind of see what our line looks like here. And I would say, looking at the city's recommendation, what came out of the planning commission, we have two concerns. One, of course, is what the FAR is on the low end. It's above even the city's recommendation of 59%. And we have data that indicates that a 60% home on a small lot doesn't solve the problem of impacting residents because of its, you know, this whole thing is really about relative size. How big is the house relative to the lot? We're not here saying you can't build a big house in San Carlos. At the high end, I don't know, is 10,000-square-foot house on a 20,000-square-foot lot consistent with the character and way we think about our community? I think a lot of people would say no. At the end of the day, though, we think the most important thing, and I think a notion that came up in a conversation I had with one of the council members is, to me, there is a multiple, it's an order of magnitude. Let's say you, let's say the standard's not set at an appropriate point, and a 60% FAR house on a 4,000-square-foot lot doesn't solve the problem of unreasonable impacts on its neighbors. You are affecting at least two people directly, people on either side, as well as anyone else who lives in the community, who feels like this is now inconsistent, and doesn't look nice, and doesn't retain the character of the neighborhood. So, I would urge you to consider that, that, you know, we're trying to balance the rights of residents here.
And just one final comment I would make is, to Commissioner Dugan's point, we did originally recommend a 50/50, 50% FAR as well as 50% lot area coverage, similar to Palo Alto. I think this represents our evolved, you know, more nuanced thinking and looking at peer city data. And so, you know, as we've seen others do, you know, perspectives have evolved on this issue.
So, here's where we, again, our main theme is, let's align with what seems to be working up and down the peninsula. We're going to show some pictures of homes in the 60% FAR range that members of Good Growth San Carlos have sent in to us, saying, "Hey, these are problematic houses from our perspective." Yeah, five, thank you. Okay. So, as you can see, we've got the range of, the way to read the yellow box there is, our dataset says that the median on 5,000-square-foot lots is 53.6%. I believe the city's data comes in about that place as well. And as you go to 10,000-square-foot lots, the other cities on the peninsula actually allow about 40%. So, these are just a couple examples of homes that are in or around the 60% FAR that people have flagged us as having substantial negative impacts on their quality of life in their home. So, we'll just flip through this 56, 57, 61%. Another 61% home. We've seen this one before, 63%. And this one also 63. So, we've got a real question. So, again, we've gone back to the data too, to say, "Okay, is 53% too restrictive? And let's look at the distribution of small homes." And if you look at it, there are literally 151 homes, which is less than 2% of homes in San Carlos that are below 4,400 square feet. On the other hand, there's actually a significant number that are 10,000 square feet and above. So, when we think about allowing, you know, 50% homes on large lots, it's a non-trivial percentage of our--
Yeah. And I would just simply add, we saw the handout this evening that the city provided with data. Our data did not come directly from the city. We got it through another source, since we had not previously seen the city provide this data. And so, ours, we recognized, we do have some RS3 lots that are included in our overall analysis. We think it's still, you know, does not invalidate the analysis. And so, the city, you'll note, has 16% of lots over, you know, 10,000 square feet and up, which is based purely on RS6, whereas, you know, our data was 18%. But we think it's within the margin of error.
Okay. Can we go to the next slide? So, these are some, so, in other words, there really are a very small number of houses that are below 4,400 square feet. And here's what it looks like if you do the math, and remember that we've reduced the requirement of covered garage spaces from 2 to 1. So, even at, so at a 4,000-square-foot house, of which there are not many, you can build nearly 2,000 square feet of living space. As soon as you get up into the sort of sweet spot, or where you see more lots, you're dealing with, you can build in excess of 2,000 square feet, which seems to be a number that's coming up amongst residents and architects about what a standard plan looks like that many people are desiring. So, where change has failed to solve the problem, I think we've made this, we think 60% FAR is still allowing big houses on small lots. We're concerned about the disconnect between home size on larger lots in San Carlos and other cities. Many cities actually have a hard cap at 6,000 square feet. For example, San Mateo and Palo Alto included, Belmont's a hard cap of 4,500. So, what we need to do here, here are recommendations. We align with peer cities across all lot sizes. We think a sliding scale makes FAR make sense. It's been embraced by a majority of the cities on the peninsula. We also fully agree that this is about good standards. That's the single most important thing, that are black and white. But then, good process is the secondary most important thing. Can you go forward?
Yep.
Okay. Just forward, please.
Yep.
This is one point. We think that if sunlight is such an important issue for solar and people's experiences, we think that if someone has to go to the RDRC to see what the impact of their house is, and alert and notify others, that a shading study would be an appropriate input to that process to allow people to have an informed discussion. Next. Okay. So, in the end, I just kind of want to say that, I've got 19 seconds. Would you afford me another two minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chrisley, Mayor. So, Good Growth has been to what I believe are all 11 meetings over the last two years, including city council meetings on lot splits. We went to the community workshop. That was noticed with a postcard. Whoops, that my timer, sorry. That was noticed, that had, I would say, 150-plus people there. So, very broadly, everyone in San Carlos who owns a home was noticed of that. Four planning commission meetings, two surveys, 2016 and 2018. Lots of letters, as is evidenced by this 638-page packet, of which resident letters and Good Growth presentations comprise a non-trivial portion. And then there, in the past four meetings, there have been 4 hours and 33 minutes of public comment that has been provided to everyone on the city council to review. So, I guess, I would like to leave you with two questions. Who in San Carlos is asking for something other than standards aligned with peer cities? Where is the constituency, number one? Where's the evidence that it would benefit our city and our residents to do something other than be consistent with what seems to be working up and down the peninsula? I think those are questions that should be answered if we are going to do something that is a significant departure from what's been proven and appears to be successful elsewhere in the community. So, again, thank you to planning commissioners, city council members, city staff for affording us the time and listening to us, and we're happy to take any comments that you might have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. So, this would be the place that we would start to ask questions, but to be quite honest, I think we should take a small break, because I'm pretty tired. So, let's take a 10-minute break, or 9-minute break. We'll be back at 9:20. So, what we're going to have now is, we'll have questions from the dais here to whomever the question needs to be addressed to. What I'd like to do, if you have, we'll do like three or four questions for a person, and if, then we'll go to the next council member, and three or four questions, and three or four questions, and we'll go from there, and hopefully, we'll be, I'd like to keep this about, by 10 o'clock, hopefully, we can finish our questions. And then, we'll see where we are, get public comment, and then perhaps 10:30, we're, because we will be coming back, I think, on this. It's important, especially because I know the folks on the east side had a candidate's night tonight, and so, I don't believe any of them are here. So, anyway, that's sort of the process I think we want to work on. So, might as well start on the right-hand side. I have all my lights lit up. So, Mr. Collins, you want to ask a couple, three questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Bob Stafford for the comment on ADUs. Additional dwelling units, or Bob, maybe something, they're called mother-in-law units?
That's it.
Okay. Just so you know. Yeah, that is an issue, and one of my questions is that, after we come out of this whole process, have we, will we have made it more difficult or easier to build ADUs in this town? And I don't expect you have an answer for it. If maybe he does, I would like to know. Okay. Second question.
Say, make sure, whoever, if you have a question, address it to staff--
I will.
--or some folks here, but it has to be directly addressed.
I will.
It's not open--
Right. It's just, it was a general opening thing. First, I'm really with, for planning commission members, not that you want to do this, but if you could work on this some more, if you had the opportunity, are there any issues that you feel got left out, or that you might want to work on to refine this? And any one of you can pick up the ball on that one.
I think we've covered everything we could think of at the time, even though we've had four study sessions and public hearings. We've covered a lot, but I'm sure there, we could emphasize, like, the ADU issue more than we did.
Okay. All right. Second question, either Brent or Christian, you can feel free to answer this. When you came up with the other cities' average of 40%, everything I've looked at so far has said that the other cities' average has really been no less than 45. How, how does, where does that discrepancy come from?
Yeah.
Come on up, Brent.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah. So, there were four different ways that we looked at that, right? And that certainly was the most conservative way. So, that 40% included six cities, specifically included Palo Alto, which city staff did not include in theirs, as well as Burlingame has been calculated a couple of different ways, because they have a FAR exemption for detached garages. And so, ours assumed an attached garage in that set. There's a different set of analysis, which has, I think, 47% for 10,000-square-foot lots, which has the detached Burlingame garage in it. But it is that set of six cities in there. So, Belmont, San Mateo, Menlo Park, Burlingame, Redwood City, Palo Alto. Did I get six?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So, but still, I mean, is Palo Alto, I mean, to get from 45 to 40, from five to six cities, tells me, just by simple math, that that--
Palo Alto's more conservative.
They must be a lot more conservative.
Yeah. And we have all the numbers. We'd be happy to pull them out and go through them at nauseam.
Not tonight.
All right. And last question for now is, when you have a sliding scale FAR, here's my concern, I'm wondering how you would address that. Let's take a lot that's 5,980 feet, okay? And you've got an FAR of .5-something for that 5,980 square feet. And the guy's next-door neighbor is 6,010 square feet. And, but he now falls in a different category. Wouldn't you have a situation where that neighbor would end up having to build a house that's smaller than his neighbor with a smaller lot?
So, I understand, I think I understand your question. And that is, you know, the basis of the calculation, then, right? So, is it stepped, or does it have any sort of formulaic curve to it? And that was something the planning commission certainly discussed quite a bit at their last session, in terms of coming up with the approach. There were a couple of different approaches that I know the city staff can comment on. One is sort of the two-step scaling, which is what we took with Good Growth, in terms of coming up with our approach. And the other was starting off with the base 1,000 square feet, and then adding a percentage on top of that, right? The 35% in this particular case, to arrive at that calculation. So, I think what you're seeing in terms of the resultant FARs, you're seeing what appears to be some type of stepped or cliff, if you will, in terms of what one could build at 5,980 versus what the other could at 6,010. But in fact, those are actual curves. So, it's a progressive, think of it like, kind of like an income tax rate, where, you know, it can be regressive or progressive, depending on your point of view. But the same way, thing applies here, where it's formulaic. So, there isn't like a drastic drop, if you will, from one to the other.
So, you don't, what you're saying is, you're not sure it would be a problem between one neighbor and the next?
Well, it wouldn't be the problem that you mentioned, in terms of one being forced lower by 30 square feet from having hit a cliff or a threshold. It's a derived calculation, right? When we go back through the math and look at the way it works. I think that's what you're asking.
I would just mention that the--
We're gonna have to have a microphone, okay?
Just tell them that the FAR, the house size you get on those two lots would be almost identical.
Right. Another way of stating it, the house size you would get on those two lots would be almost identical.
Okay. All right. I may have some more later, but I'm going to cede my time for the time being.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
This is a question for Al. And I also wanted to express my appreciation to everybody for their service and their time in this long process. My neighbor has a second story he can see in my backyard. When I go up on my roof, put up the Christmas lights, I can see in the backyard on both sides. Is there a case in which you can have a second story in San Carlos in a residential neighborhood and not see into your neighbor's yard? Is that an expectation that we are trying to set?
No, I don't, I don't think there's any, there was any consideration of an expectation that you could or you couldn't, but people are just saying that, you know, the newer homes are, you know, starting to get to where people can see in their backyard. I mean, I don't think there's any expectation--
But I guess the question is, is that a change? Are we trying to solve a problem that can't be solved? If you can have a second story on your house, you can see in your neighbor's yard? I mean, I, that just seems, unless I'm missing something.
No, none of these standards would change that. Nothing that's on the table would change if eventually, every, you know, you did a second floor, you could still look down at some point in somebody's backyard.
Did you want to add to that?
Yeah. Basically, you're fighting the age-old problem of putting a second story next to a single story, and that's the thing that is driving this. You're getting more and more second stories put up against single-story houses, so you're--
Regardless, if I had a second story too, you could still see in my backyard.
Yeah, you could see in the backyard.
Okay. For the record, I have no issue with my, I also get wiffle balls head into my yard. I have no issue-- I have no issue with that. I can hear my neighbors practicing the violin. I have no issue with that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we talk about what the problem is. I want to make sure that we're not setting up a false expectation, because people say privacy, but you can see into the yard. I also wanted to ask a question about...
Can I make one? Because I think there's another element that we're discussing here that is germane in terms of the impact on privacy. And I think in 2011, when we increased the lot coverage to 45, from 40 to 50%, we allowed people to occupy a much larger, 25% larger part of the lot. That was one issue. And the other was the rear setbacks, which used to be, I believe, 20 feet, first and second story, were decreased to 15 feet. And so part of the issue had to do with the fact that these larger homes were pushing five to 10 feet further back.
Yeah. Apparently, that's not the case, but we'll move on for, go ahead.
And then I just wanted to ask a question. Again, I'm really just trying to understand, we've been talking about, you know, we want to solve the problem, but I just want to understand what the problem is. This is kind of a question for Greg or for Al. Can I paint my house red and have it completely different than all the houses in the neighborhood? Is that allowed?
Yes.
Okay. Can I put up a weird fence in front of my house that none of my neighbors like?
As long as it's not over six feet.
Okay. Okay. So the compatible, the notion of compatibility, is there anything in law that says today that, you know, the house must be compat, the aesthetics of the house must be compatible with the neighborhood? Is that...
Well, the only thing that we have in our code is when a house is over a certain size, design review might come into play for larger houses. But in the abstract and existing house that has not been subjected to any design review, there's a lot of freedom with the resident to do what they want to their house. Colors, style, treatments, things like that.
Okay. And then maybe I would just close then. Again, I'm just trying to understand the problem. If maybe the planning commission or members of Shack, if you had one anecdote that stuck out to you where there was a resident who said, this caused, you know, this issue of a larger home being built caused me personal harm because of X, I'd be interested to hear if there was one that stuck out, if anybody wanted to share it.
I, I've done this many a times. It's been, it's basically always been the privacy issue that you brought up. It's been a privacy issue of just people in the second story being able to look down in the backyard. That's been the extent of it in my experience.
Okay.
I would refer you to the fourth slide in our presentation with the quote of Bill Harkola, who built his home. He did a remodel to take advantage of passive solar. And then a very large home was built right next door that took away his winter sun for, I don't know whether it's two to four months, but it affected the efficiency of his solar as well as his quality of life sitting in his kitchen. So I think sun is also a very big issue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. You're going to skip yourself? Jeez.
Oh, yeah.
I thought you had some questions.
I might, but...
So again, I thank everybody who is both here and not here, members of both panels who weren't able to make it for all the time and effort that you put into this. And I know I've talked to some of you offline outside of this, and I appreciate you making the time for that as well. I really do. This is a very complex issue. I don't think anybody up here has said this yet. Ron said it better than I could at the last meeting we had. The one thing I hope everybody in the public understands, whatever we come up with, nobody's going to like it completely, okay? And that's just the nature of the beast. It's not because we're trying to disappoint people. So one question I had to start with is focused on the parking issues, and particularly the car accommodation issues. Because what really leaped out at me when I heard some of the proposals that were coming back from both planning commission and for Shack is that I get a lot of email complaints from residents about people who say there are too darn many cars on the streets to start with. And it seems like, even though I don't know an awful lot of people who put cars in their garage, it seems like if we reduce the amount of garage space onsite and the amount of onsite parking space, there's going to be more cars on the street. So my question to both panels is, did you guys consider that? And if so, how did you come to the trade-off saying, oh, that's okay?
We did consider that, and you, I think, answered the question yourself to some extent by pointing out that people don't often use their garage for parking, and we ensured that they could still have two parking spots in the driveway in front of the house.
Oh, I see. So in other words, that, yes, technically, they're giving up a garage space, but they're really not because there never was a car in it anyway.
So there's one garage spot and two spots in the driveway in front. Also, it's self-selecting. People who are willing to go with a one-car garage are probably less likely to have, to be parking on the street. They would only choose that if they were a one-car or two-car family.
Any other comments? I mean, that seems to be...
The only addition I would make is the incentive to put the two-car garage at the back of the lot gives a family some relief from our proposed calculation and still leaves two indoor garage-covered parking spaces. So we've also thought about how to preserve two-car garage, but also move it away and address the attractiveness issue.
Anything from the Shack side? There doesn't have to be. I'm just saying, if there is, I'd like to hear.
I'd just add that we gave some consideration about broader trends with, you know, the mobility as a service versus an ownership model, looking into the future.
Okay. Jim, actually, I think I owe you $5 because that was a great dovetail into my next question. So several things in the proposals that, from both groups that I've heard come forward, if I'm understanding them correctly, and the detached garage is one of them. But another one is the notion of trying to prioritize or incentivize single-story houses. Implicit in that is a notion that it's, it's better from a community point of view, or acceptable from a community point of view, to reduce the amount of, for lack of a better term, green space on the, on the lot, okay? And again, that one perked up for me because we just built a house a few years ago, and in fact, one of the reasons we ended up going two stories is because we wanted to have a yard and a garden and stuff. And I'm not saying everybody should live like I do, but it just, it's interesting to me that we seem to be saying, oh, it's okay to kind of get rid of greens, green stuff and opens, not open space, but kind of open yard space, if you will. So did you guys think about that? And if so, what was the process by which you came to say, that's all right?
Sure, I can address that. We certainly did think about that. You know, I think mostly we were trying to solve for the problem that was at hand, which was a perception of overly masked houses and the idea of returning to a 40% lot coverage. Very consistent feedback from the community, as well as our own opinions on the commission, that that would force, if you bring the 40%, if you bring it from 50 back to 40, you'd be pushing mass up to that second floor, which is exactly what has been causing a lot of concern, was our perception of that. And then I would just make the observation that the lot coverage ratio is 50%. So as far as greenery or gardening space, you are only allowed on half of your lot. So there is still room left for that need as well.
I would just add that in our proposal, we increased the rear lot setback from 15 to 20 to encourage that extra five foot of space at the back of the lot, creating a, you know, 40 by 5, 200-square-foot bigger backyard on a small lot, for example.
Mark, I think what you're really saying is that the natural environment that we install in that which is here is important, and it's an important mitigating factor in the design of a home and how a neighbor feels. And I think one thing I'm seeing in a number of jurisdictions that I work in is a more stringent approach to landscape and the need to have the civil plans and the utility plans be mapped out with trees in mind to really see, is this going to be another example of one to two years later, the construction methodologies are used and overwatering of oak trees to get rid of what was there that they supposedly were so enraptured with? So I think what you're bringing up is another example of, you know, it's probably a good arborist or the building department coming into this process to add some input of how would they preserve and enhance the elements that are here and the ones that are required. So I think that's a good point.
All right.
I think also there's an undisclosed advantage of going two stories. It'll save a lot of heritage trees in the community. And not to change the subject, but I think there's a danger of just looking at other communities and taking an average from it and thinking, we're in the, we're so smart because most of those cities, we look at Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and parts of San Mateo, certainly Burlingame, have much larger lots than the average in San Carlos.
Thank you, Don. Last question. One of the things that I wonder about when I read about the concerns people have of the big houses being built next to them, did, and this is a question that also involves staff, so I'm not sure who could best answer it. Has anybody gone back and looked at some of the, the sort of outliers that are triggering issues to see whether or not, which ones, like are a larger proportion of them, spec-built homes as opposed to owner-occupied built homes? And if so, you know, is there sort of a correlation between, hey, maybe, maybe, maybe an underlying problem is not so much necessarily the size of the home, it's the nature of the person who's building it. It's either being built by spec or being built by an owner occupied. And I don't know, I'm just wondering about that. So...
Yes, staff has not looked at that. We haven't made that determination, whether it's spec or property owner-built.
Personally, I would like to know that before we sort of reconvene, at least on the exemplar issues or the things that seem to get a lot of attention to them. Just get a sense of that. So, thank you.
Mr. Grootkot?
How many questions in this room?
Couple, three.
Couple, three.
And then we'll come back. We'll come back, we'll come back to you.
Isn't a couple, couple, three, that's six questions?
We'll come back to you, Matt. I won't leave you out, Matt.
Sure. I guess this is probably for staff. My first question is, back before we made any changes, Al, we used to have a thing that there was a five-foot setback at the ground floor, seven and a half at the second floor, but you could, you could go into that second floor setback by two feet if you were pushing out 50%, I think it was, of the wall space into that setback. So essentially creating a bay window. Was, was that, did things like that, design guidelines that we had like that, was any of that ever considered? Some of the things that used to be working before we made the change and went to 50% lot coverage? And the other big deal was we went to a nine-foot setback at the second floor, but 30% you could be over that setback?
Yeah, second floor setbacks were discussed a great deal. But, and I'm trying to think, what else? You know, the 30% issue that you mentioned was discussed, and we saw it in the models that were shown. But those were the key things that were discussed. I can't think of, you know, and there was a discussion of lack of particular guidelines for specific design issues with regard to privacy and window placement and things like that. And those are, those are things that are being recommended that we develop later as part of design guidelines for the RDRC.
Okay. And staying with the setback issue, was there, I know we had some, you know, recommendations from architects and then residents and so forth with Shack. Any structural engineers that gave any input and any concern raised about the added cost when you do these second-story setbacks and the additional cost it creates because it, it complicates the structural aspect, it complicates dealing with shear, and adds a fair amount of cost to construction?
Yeah, there was no cost analysis or discussion of those costs associated with those, those second-floor setbacks that you're referring to. And yes, they are more costly to do, but we didn't analyze that.
Was there anything thrown to either the planning commission or Shack as an idea having second floor be a percent of ground floor?
No.
Okay. And then I'll just ask one more question, and the mayor's promised we can come back around for another round. On the east side, there are some different kind of lots in terms of size. And then there's also the issue on the east side, on the north side, of CMU block homes, which are very difficult to build second stories on. Was there any consideration given to what the conditions are on the east side?
Not specifically, no.
Not specifically, okay. And then I'll wait for the rest of my questions.
One question I had, the setbacks 20, 25, 25 for the second story, what about decks?
The planning commission said that decks could protrude into the setbacks if they were at a lower level. They, I can't remember exactly, but it was like, you know, they don't want you to be able to see it. If it's low enough, then the deck can protrude into the setback. It's, so it doesn't look bulk and mass.
Couldn't put a setback on the, you couldn't put a deck rather on the second story?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, I'm just asking. Okay. I don't, you're going to, I'll let the, most of the questions are going to be asked by my colleagues. Mr. Collins, do you have any more questions? I'm sure you do.
I have one for now.
Okay.
And I don't know if this is for, I think it's mostly for planning commission. I'm just wondering, because a lot of, a lot of these, the reason that we're probably all here is, as somebody alluded to, I think it was maybe Mark, or Cameron alluded to it too, of when you're on the second story, you can look down into somebody else's backyard. I'm just wondering if, was there a thought to maybe allowing even a higher FAR, such as a, I'm just making it up, 60% or 65% on a small lot? If there was a condition that you built one story? In other words, if somebody says, look, I want, I need 3,000 square feet. Well, fine, you have a 4,500-square-foot house, you can build that, but we'll allow you a bigger FAR if you build it one story. And did that, did that come up?
Al, do you want to answer that, please?
The Shack recommendations did have some considerations for incentivizing first-floor building out into the rear of the, of the yard. So they did incentivize that in some of their recommendations, yes.
All right. And is that, did that end up in overall planning commission?
No, it was part of the Shack recommendations, but it didn't end up in the, in the planning commission recommendation.
You're saying it did?
It did not.
It not?
It did not, yeah.
All right. Yeah, all right. We may want to talk about that more. All right. That's it for me for now.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for staff about any impact on real estate prices. So have, has there been any discussion about that? And, you know, what would you say that the typical homeowner in San Carlos would expect? Things to stay completely the same, or the price of homes would go up, or that they would go down as a result of a reduction in the building potential?
You know, it's interesting. I've had some discussions with Councilmember Olbert, and we pulled those, the data that you saw that I presented to you with regard to home sales. And I believe Councilmember Olbert may have taken that data and done those, that analysis. Staff didn't make that value judgment with that data. Yeah, so...
So the staff doesn't have any point of view as to what would happen to real estate prices?
Oh, I mean, what happened to real estate?
What would happen? So the recommendation is reduce, you know, reduce the size of homes that can be built on a standard 6,000-square-foot lot, for instance.
We actually spent a lot of time talking about this and trying to look at different metrics. And Al had discussions with several real estate agents in town. And, you know, what we ascertained is basically common And, you know, what we ascertained is basically common sense would dictate that, you know, there's probably a point at which you could restrict the building of houses down so small that it would have an impact on real estate prices. We didn't really feel like, within the window of any of the recommendations that were being discussed, that we had enough data or information or sentiment from real estate agents or others that worked more closely in that area to lead us to believe that that would cause that to start to override market consideration. You know, we, we actually looked at it down to the point where, you know, you could make an argument on the other side that by not allowing somebody to build a larger house, you're actually saving them money because of the cost to build per square foot. And as you saw in the graph, larger houses sell at a lower per-square-foot basis than smaller homes do for a whole number of reasons, some of which we think we understand and some of which we don't think we understand. So to answer your question, as clear as mud, we don't think that, that any of these recommendations would have a significant impact. But certainly I can tell you from my career experience, if they do, we'll be back here again real fast.
Mr. Mayor, may I chime in?
Sure.
And I was actually going to share the results of what I did at our next meeting, but I'll just briefly say now, Cameron. And it is not, it is not a market valuation analysis, because as I suspect you know better than I do, market analyses are very, very difficult to do. But if you take the data about the last, what was it, Al, 18 months' worth of transactions in San Carlos, and you try and explain the prices that people paid in the market for the properties they bought, and you use only two variables to try and drive that, and one is the living area of the house and the other is the size of the lot, the R squared on the relationship is in excess of 96%, which does not necessarily mean that those are the only factors that are important, but they are significant in terms of explaining, or maybe significant in terms of explaining what people do. And they, one of the coefficients is, it says that, it says that each square foot of living space is worth about $1,000, whereas each square foot of lot space is worth about $27. What's really valuable is what you can build on the land. Okay, that's what people are paying for. Anyway, we can go through that more at the next meeting. Or if you want to meet offline ahead of time, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
One additional question?
Sure, of course.
So, you know, you started the presentation, Al, saying in 2011, we switched from 40% to 50% lot coverage. Do you, do you think that that actually had much of an effect? Or do you think that the effect is more just that the economy has been red hot and that, you know, San Carlos has become a very desirable community, become more affluent, and there's been more demand for, for bigger houses? How much weight do you put on this switch from 40% to 50%?
Well, I don't, I don't put a whole lot of weight to it. And I mean, I think you're more correct in saying that, you know, there's, we live in an area with good jobs and a lot of high-paying job, knowledge-based jobs, and, and so people can afford to do it. We have a very desirable community, good schools, all the things that we know. So I think that the 50% or 50 to, 40 to 50%, we tried to look for that, that switch over. And there's a couple of years where FARs kind of went up, but then they went back down during, since 2011. So there, we didn't see a correlation, a real strong correlation between that lot coverage and the amount of square footage. Many of them are below the 50%.
And so we should take that, you know, I believe the 40% lot coverage goes back to the 1950s or something, goes back as far as anyone's sort of memory. So it would be too naive to say simply that, hey, that served us well for half a century. We made a change. Residents have been raising concerns, let's just go back to the good old days. Is that, is that too simple?
It may be. I mean, we do have some data, I think, that we put together for lot coverage somewhere in here. We've got so much data, it's just, you know, coming out our ears. But I know that, that we did look at that. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's a little more difficult. I think we are seeing that people are getting closer to 40% in the last few years, or 50%. But, you know, that's what we drew from it. I think Mr. Collins wanted to ask for some data, we provided him with some data as well.
And if I could just, Mr. Mayor, just if I could just respond to what Cameron said, just to give you a little bit of history. I was on the planning commission between 1988 and 1992. And in 1991, I believe, we did recommend to the council, and they approved a 40% lot coverage ordinance. There was a bunch of other stuff in there, but the, the lot coverage was set at 40%. And I will tell you that for a few months after that, a lot of people screamed about it and said that it was just going to result in giant homes. And, and it died down after about a month and a half or so. But my earliest memory goes back to 1991, when we actually codified 40% lot coverage.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. I'm not going to ask for this next item to be discussed right now because it's a data request. But Al, as I was mentioning to you when we were on break, I am interested in seeing what the lot size distribution is in some of the peer communities that we're talking about comparing ourselves to. Because again, values are driven by what you can build on the land, and, and to the extent that other communities have larger average lot sizes or a large, a distribution that's typically shifted larger than ours, we wouldn't expect to necessarily want to have the same FAR as them. So I'd, I'd like to know that before we go too much further. The other, other questions I had, which I think is a planning commission question, because you guys are the ones who reinstated, or changed their rear yard setback, right? You made it bigger, right? As that was being discussed, I was thinking that, I was wondering, are we potentially sort of solving the same problem twice? Because we're putting other constraints on what can be built, and then we're also imposing a bigger setback on it in order to, and the other constraints are designed to make the houses smaller, which inherently will make them, depending on where they're situated on the lot, sort of less intrusive on the neighbors. So I'm just wondering if, if, if you considered that, and yes, they are independent enough that you want both, or, I just would hate to sort of, you know, sort of double down and, and solve the same problem twice, because this is a matter of balancing stuff out, not just doing everything that seems to make sense.
One advantage of increasing the rear yard setback is that, that backyard space close to the house for the neighbor, that's often the most, that's the place where the most imposition on the neighbor can happen. And so if the houses are aligned in the back, people are happy if one is going further back than the neighbor. That's where the most pain can arise. So that's a, so it's a sweet area to restrict because that's the most painful.
A little bit, because what I'm visualizing is that, that the other changes we're talking about essentially reduce the block of the house, okay? So it's inherently smaller than what could be built today. And unless somebody were to say, oh, you know what, without this bigger setback in the backyard, I'm going to push my house way back from the street, which I guess they could do, but most people tend, that I know, tend not to do that. You see what I'm saying? If, if they tend to stick relatively close to the, the street access, then the backyard's going to be inherently bigger anyway, without the, without having a separate setback rule, a bigger setback rule.
I think one of the council members asked earlier, maybe it was yourself, Mark, if there was one thing to spend a little time on, and that, I, that would be what incentives might be available to encourage keeping that one story? And so maybe one of the things that, that could be looked at is if the standard setback was 20 feet, in other words, moved to 20 feet. But if, if a homeowner were to agree to keep their, their home at one, one story, then maybe then that 20-foot could be reverted to 15 feet as an example.
Okay, that's a clever idea. Let's see. Next question, which is the last one for now, I think, Al, is again, an additional data request. You did touch on it a little bit, but I would actually like to have a little bit more education on the recent trends on, in terms of FARs, about what people are actually building. Because I'm trying to get a handle for how that relates to what we're proposing to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Grokot?
Here we go. Al, was there any other ideas used or considered for notification? I've heard, I heard said that increasing notification from 150 feet to 300 feet. Were there any other models that were considered?
The one addition to that, that the planning commission came up with, is a sign that should be placed on the front of the lot. And so they did, that is a new idea, that they attached to that 300-foot is a sign on the front of the, of the lot. But other ideas, I don't recall any unique or other creative ideas.
And do you have any data on when notification is used? For instance, in the RC, RDRC process? Which neighbors actually end up showing up at the meetings?
Nothing specific.
Nothing specific, okay.
I mean, anecdotally, you know, it's if you're, you have concerns, you're usually at the meeting, you know?
Yeah, okay. By the way, some of these questions for, for my fellow councilmembers, I'm, I'm checking these off because I have issues with these things, and I intend to bring them up when we get into the nitty-gritty. Because I think there's some things that have been grossly missed in this whole process.
Okay.
No, I have a couple more, if I may. Currently in San Carlos, you can build, and I was actually unaware of this, it took a client bringing this up and making me aware of it. Currently in San Carlos, you can build within 10 feet of the rear property line, so long as you retain, I think it's 30% of the rear yard? Something to that effect, because I know it was used, I used it on a project in, on the east side, and it opened up incredible creativity and... Must be a real difficult question.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Lisa Porras, Principal Planner. I was just explaining to Al, which I will explain to you, that there is a provision currently in our code. And this is actually something that staff struggles with, and we, our recommendation is to remove it, especially given all the comments and concerns we've heard about houses encroaching into the rear yard area, which, like some of our commissioners said, has been the, the sensitive issue. But there is a provision that allows one to build, and I believe it's as close as five feet from the rear property line, provided that a certain percentage of the rear yard area is left open, free and clear. This is a provision in the code that is rarely used. I think it's maybe come up once, where staff really had to sit down and make an interpretation. But that's something that we currently are not recommending. We wouldn't recommend because it's not in alignment with the recommendations that are being set forth as presented to you this evening.
So that was going to be my question, is that if we adopt what's being presented to us, that provision would go away? Okay. And, and I, I just want to, I know this is a question period, but I just want to mention that that's the kind of thing that is very useful on the east side when you have a cinder block home and you can't build a second story. So I'll be bringing that up when we, again, get into the nitty-gritty. The last question I have, and this is my last question, Mayor, so I don't have any more.
I'll remember.
I've heard a couple of times tonight about saving solar, which can be one thing if your neighbor already has a second-story house, but if they have a single-story house, and they don't even have solar, but you have to preserve it just in case they might decide to put it on. Has staff looked into what it takes to go through the gymnastics of getting a solar study? Not a shade study, but an actual solar study?
I'll speak for Al, May. I don't think we have done that level of detail because it wasn't really, although it was an issue that was discussed, it's not something that is part of the current zoning ordinance. We don't have any of that, that issue there. So, and I did look at the question of how other cities have handled the, the solar access issue, and typically they have a whole separate chapter in their code that deals with those issues. So that, I think that'd probably be a separate subject matter for, for a future consideration by the, by the planning commission and council, but it's not really part of what has been studied in any way for this.
I'm glad to hear that. And just a quick commentary on it, I had a project in Fremont where it was, they, they just passed a solar ordinance, and they had the requirement. And I asked them, I said, so where do you want me to go get a solar person to do a study? And they said, we don't know. And actually, there are none, because it's not, it would be a, what do they call it? A cottage industry? And there's no people involved in that yet, so to, to get it is near impossible. So just something to consider, you might talk to the people over in Fremont, how they're dealing with their new solar ordinance.
Mr. Collins?
I think you just didn't turn my light off.
Okay, sorry, I didn't turn your light off. I'll turn your light off now. I had one quick question. Al, you said there were 15 houses that were built in the last 18 months?
That's correct.
I, I'm sorry, I don't believe it. Because isn't there, how much of the house do you have to tear down before it's not a, an addition or vice versa, a new house? Because I've seen some of these houses that have one wall left, and I guess that's not a new house. You know what I'm saying?
Right. A, a new house is considered a complete scrape.
Complete, complete raise, okay?
Yeah, you can, if you have 50% of your walls that you leave up, that's considered a remodel.
You have to leave 50% up?
Yes.
Okay.
On the ground floor, yeah.
All right, I guess I better go count again, because it seems like I've seen a lot more than 15 houses, but I'm sure they, you're right. Okay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Just a few more. I was intrigued by when I, when John Dugan and I met, he hails from Michigan, Chicago?
Actually from Iowa.
Sorry, Iowa, yes. One of those cold places, like, like me. So we were talking about basements, and I was intrigued by the idea of encouraging people to build basements in San Carlos, in part because I know a very few people who have done that. So my question to Al is, how common are they in San Carlos, and are there reasons why people don't build them? Like, I don't know, water table, incredible expense, earthquake?
They're, they're a little more common than they used to be. They're very unusual in terms of the being in California, I would agree with that. We've seen a, a couple of them, you know, there's not many, but people are doing it, they are incredibly expensive to do. You have to build retaining walls to, you know, hold the, hold the, you know, soil back and everything. So it's a very expensive undertaking to do. But we've seen a couple.
Okay, so the cost is a significant factor then. There were, I think it was when the Shack group was speaking, and I apologize for not running that, who said this, but I thought somebody, and Bob, it may have been you, made some comment about focusing too much, and that, these are my words, on FAR can inhibit, I wrote it down, is diversity slash creativity in design. And maybe it wasn't you, I thought I heard somebody say something like that. And if any of you said that, I'm trying to, I'd like to understand why you said that, you know, it was what, what the logic was. And if I'm hallucinating, you can just tell me I'm hallucinating.
Councilmember Collins' comment followed on that, which is, what is the incentive for maintaining a first floor? And so part of the easy solution is FAR, FAR. But I forget who said it, you have to do an FAR analysis with lot size relative to each city. I've done it. We're the, we have the smallest lots. So that FAR is a, is a, it's a, it's a false... So that FAR is a, it's a false solution. The real one, I think, is, you know, Mr. Collins is touching on it, we were, which is, what are the incentives to have great design and try to have more first story? So I think that is, I mean, that's the challenge. The FAR can't bring, as was said, sensitivity into the actual design. And I think it's going to put an unusual amount of pressure on the residential design review. Too much.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. And I think that actually also answered what I think was my other question.
Okay. We will have an opportunity to ask more questions at our next meeting. But there are a couple people that stuck around all this time, and so I'd like to hear from them. We will hear, obviously, from folks at our next meeting. We will keep the public hearing going. But is Mr. Garibaldi still here? Please come up and take a few minutes, no more than three though, please, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mike Garibaldi. I live here in San Carlos on Elm Street, actually a couple blocks down from the homes that were shown earlier. I bought my home in 2012 with my wife and my infant son, or infant daughter at the time, and five years, six years, seven years later, we are now a family of five. We're on a 4,800-square-foot lot, and we're outgrowing our house. And we're very ingrained in this community, involved in local schools, parishes, youth sports organizations. We want to be here forever. The only way for us to do that, given what's going on in the real estate market, is to go up. So the question becomes then, well, what's the appropriate size home? And I do understand that lot size does have something to do with it, but I would echo what has been said earlier, that when comparing to our neighboring cities, it's important to look at the distribution of lot sizes. And so even though San Mateo, say, on a 5,000-square-foot lot, you only have .50 FAR, well, is that, are those 5,000-square-feet homes in San Mateo's comparable to the homes that we have in the flats here, that are very family-friendly, lots of schools and parks and et cetera? So I think it's important to study that, which I'm pleased to see, it sounds like we're going to. The second point that I'd like the council to consider is to ensure that there's a sufficient grace period between the time the new codes, if any, are adopted and when they become effective. And I do say that, I am in the process of completing my design drawings. I think they'll be submitted prior to any adoption of the code. But the process of working with an architect is extremely costly, and it takes a lot of time. All the architects, especially the local ones, are in demand. It's very hard to get their time. So it could take several months. So I believe it'd be unfair to have folks who have already begun the process have to go back and start at square one and forfeit their investment in any architecture fees. Finally, I think that this issue is very important, and I think that what makes this city such a great place to live is the people and the families, and it's not the size of the homes. And I know many new families that are very involved in the community, and they have brand-new homes. Some might think they're too big. I personally think they're beautiful, and they replace old, kind of dilapidated structures. And it's the people in the community that make it what it is. And I'd hate to see a situation where families like myself can't build the house that they need for their family and are forced to move elsewhere. Thank you.
If you have comments. Lucia Sanchez?
Thank you for the opportunity. I have been to, I think, all of the public meetings regarding house size, and I just have to say that I'm concerned about San Carlos going from the city of good living to the city of big development. I've been pretty involved, I've gotten up and spoken, I've written, I've listened to a lot of, you know, all of the discussions, some of it I can fathom, some of it I can't. I started off being really excited and inspired, and slowly but surely became increasingly disillusioned, because I felt like, how was it possible that there was so much public comment that was brought out in these chambers, and then city staff would return with proposals that reflected no change? And I have to say, I'm really relieved that we're moving in the right direction now. It's taken a long time. My main feeling is that there's new people on the Planning Commission, and then there potentially will be new people on the City Council. And there is so much that city residents have put in to coming to these meetings and speaking up, that I would like to ask that people kind of speak up and say, have you listened to the videotapes of all the public comments in the past? I think it's three planning, three study meetings and one, you guys know what it is, but I can't keep all the terminology straight. But for instance, I feel like Shack keeps getting referenced a lot tonight, and I feel like, I don't know what Shack is. Shack started out as this advisory body, but it keeps being referred to. I think there's some confusion about city staff when Shack, Shack, as far as I know, I think Christian may be the only person, I could be wrong, that has attended any of those public meetings on house size after Shack finished deliberating. So I don't know, but I'm just concerned about the way things are represented sometimes, and I'm concerned that, okay, concerned that residents won't be heard. So I think I would just ask that all of you new people, or City Council, it's all of you, because you haven't been to those meetings, and city planners that are new, listen to, and there's transcripts, I think Christian provided them. I think it's really important, because I do feel like a lot of citizen energy went into this, and only now is it beginning to feel like maybe some of it's being heard. So that's my main concern, because otherwise, I'm going to be really disillusioned in this process. But I'm feeling hopeful. I'm feeling hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Garima Chaula? I apologize if I butcher these names.
You said it perfectly.
Could you say that again?
This was a very perfect thing you did today.
Go ahead, please.
Hello, everybody. I'm new to San Carlos community. I have lived in Redwood City before this, and I'm new here, but I love San Carlos so much that we moved to the city, so thank you for keeping it city of good living. One of the things I am confused about is, I haven't heard all the recordings, but I'm a little confused with today's presentation. What is the main issue that we are solving? Cameron asked a similar question, where are we talking about bulk of the house, the height of the house, the look of it, the color of it? What are we really talking about? Isn't the height restrictions what limit how high something is and the setback? How is FAR going to solve it? I kind of feel I don't understand the solution and the problem correlation right now, because to me, the solutions are all about how to make people build smaller homes, but the question was, the houses are too big, and we like smaller houses on the block. The garages are too big, and we don't like the look of garages in front of the house. How can we make sure the garages are on the back, which was not so much discussed in the solution discussion? And the other thing I wanted to ask about the data, there was a discussion about how San Carlos allows you to have .8, .9 FAR. My question is, what percentages of less than 6,000-square-foot lots have those .8, .9? Is it just like one person or one house, or five houses, or 10 houses? Or is it like 50% of the houses are going to that rate? Because there's a height limitations, size limitations, lot coverage limitations, all of these things come into account, where you are limited to how much you can build. One last point, no, actually two. One point was discussed, the house size is a problem of privacy. In my opinion, privacy is something that can be solved in so many different ways. If one person's house is taller than your house, it all depends on where the windows are, where the deck is. It's not always apples and apples, it's apples and oranges. It's not just straightforward saying, oh, somebody has a taller house than mine, so they will, I will lose my privacy. Not necessarily. There are a lot of houses, 50% of San Carlos is Hillside District, and Hillside District, everybody's looking into somebody else's yard, because you can't avoid it. In flatlands, the way the houses are structured, it's all like rectangles one after another, so decks or backyards are shared, so you are able to see someone's backyard, even if in your house. You can easily see that. So I'm a little confused about, when you talk about privacy and how the house size changes that or fixes that. The last thing I want to talk about is RDRC, and there was small discussion about how RDRC doesn't have the teeth, or they don't make the impact that they could. But last I read the San Carlos code, it says if you are building a house more than 3,000 square foot, or you're adding addition, which is making you go a certain size, you have to go through RDRC, which is a painstaking process of the time it takes, and especially the cost it is. You hire an architect, you hire a structural engineer, you hire civil engineer, all that counts to hundreds and thousands of dollars. And on top of that, the time it takes to do RDRC. And even after that, if people are able to build big houses, I'm surprised how the process is working. I'm curious to know how the process is done today, and how to fix the process more than putting in more restrictions on how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Bonnie McClure?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I really want to commend you on finally going to a one-car-covered garage. I think that's going to solve a lot of problems. I know you've studied a lot of the other things, but that's one real big improvement. But only if you provide for a double car parking. I mean, it could be in tandem or side-by-side, and maybe have that be a place where the kids could play hopscotch or something when the car isn't parked there. But part of the parking that is allowed on the streets is because we have no policing saying, you park it on your own land instead of in the street, because the part of the streets in front of the residents is not yours to park. It's supposed to be public property. So I just wanted to make that one point. The other point is that I am concerned with the young man that wants to add to his property. There are a lot of young families. Sure, I've been here 60 years, and I've seen the different houses, but the thing is that the new houses should be creatively allowed, to be planned by architects to make it look good on the block. But the old houses next door that's been there since 1940 is going to be replaced or remodeled anyway. And we shouldn't be always listening to the little old people like me that think that things are going to always stay the way they are. We need progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Joseph Zemeyer? Did I say that right? No?
If I said anything else, I would probably regret it.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been a homeowner in San Carlos for over 30 years, and I've been to all these meetings since spring. And boy, it is a struggle for all of you and for me to figure out how to accommodate all the respective concerns to allow reasonable growth, and yet try and protect some of the existing homeowners. I think the Planning Commission recommendation is a significant improvement over what was before. What was before was sky-high, I think. I think good growth has been very, very persuasive in terms of their analysis, at least my opinion, and I endorse their recommendations. I think the concern centers so much on the small lots under 6,000 square feet. I think what so many people are concerned about is how looming structures right at the property line or near the property line, I understand the setback issue, but those things affect, you know, your sense of space, but especially your access to solar, whether it's for solar panels or just for your trees and your plants growing in your yard, and sort of enjoyment of a little bit of sun. I also think that for these smaller lots under 6,000 square feet, the more we can encourage or allow people to occupy more of the lot, like the 50% lot area coverage ratio, to reduce the amount of second stories is a good thing, because I think that's where most of the concern comes in for a lot of people. I do recognize one of the comments tonight about, you know, the need for people to have growth for their families, and for all of us to encourage a good spirit of community and have people who are like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Okay, we will have opportunity at the next meeting to do that. So you had one more question, Mr. Olbert, and then we're going to take this.
Yes, thank you, Bob. This was sparked by, I forget which one of the speakers, who, I think it was you, sir, who sparked this. I would be interested either tonight or when we get back together again, hearing a Realtor perspective on to what extent part of the reason we're having this problem today is because in years past, it was not uncommon for people to stay within the same community when their family grew and buy a bigger house. I remember when I first moved to San Carlos in the late '90s, that was a relatively common thing that happened. But what's happened, what I've been told anecdotally by a couple of Realtor friends, is that the frequency of that has dropped off a lot, because the market's so tight, it's almost impossible to coordinate selling and buying a house at the same time. I'm not asking it in the sense of, oh, this is any kind of magic bullet, but I would like to get a sense of it, because I think, to the extent that is a growing problem, then I feel like we have to make sure that people can enlarge the asset that they have, because they may have no other alternative other than saying, "See ya, we got to drive you out of the community."
Mr. Rubens, I'm just going to continue this City Council meeting then, I mean, the public hearing.
Yeah, I'd recommend you continue the hearing.
Do you have a motion for that?
You should have a motion to continue it to the next meeting on October 22nd.
You can have a motion for that, please.
Mr. Mayor, I moved second.
So moved, moved it second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mergosili?
Yes. Okay, so we'll continue this on our October 22nd meeting. So 7A council members, reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, committee, whatever. Mr. Growcut?
I have nothing.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Malpe, comments from city administrative business?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, if there's no other business, then we'll adjourn. Thank you.